This meeting of the Urbana Council to order. That is, the committee. The meeting of the committee as a whole to order. And we, do we have a motion on the agenda?
Roll call.
Oh, I beg your pardon, yes, roll call, please.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Present.
Mr. Hayes?
Present.
Ms. Huth?
Here.
Ms. Pat?
Present.
Mr. Otto?
Present.
Mr. Whelan?
Yes, here.
Ms. Wyman? Mayor Satterthwaite?
Here.
I just might say, and Ms. Wyman's not here tonight because she's taking her bar exam, and we all wish her well. The, um, next is the agenda. Do we have a motion on the agenda?
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Okay. Yeah, of course.
Two minutes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm distracted, I'm sorry. The minutes, we need to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, we need a motion on that.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any additions or deletions? Now, that's the, uh, the notation is June 28th. Is that the, that's what we're going on. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes. Now, we come to that delightful moment of public input, and you folks will have a chance to speak your piece. Welcome to our chambers. We'll start out here with, we'll take these in the order that they were given to us, we'll go through them. Now, I'd ask you to speak for no more than five minutes, we have a lot of folks here, and it's all, what we have to say and what you have to say is very important, and we want to hear it, but try to be as concise as possible, and please don't, if somebody's already said what you'd like to say, unless it's terribly important that you get it on the floor, I would say let someone be, someone else be the spokesperson, if you don't mind. We don't want to repeat ourselves too many times. First, on the, the person that wants to speak is Ben Grosser. Ben, will you just take a seat? Now, do we have a sign-in sheet up there?
No.
We don't need that.
We can use this, okay. That's all right, Ben, I'll use this, and, yeah. Just give us your name and your address and all of that.
Ben Grosser, 2106 South Race Street. Having watched the city council nearly every Monday for the last few years, I have to say that I find myself quite frustrated with the current series of events. I think one of the primary reasons that the council overrode the mayor's veto of the ward map decision was the realization that there are more pressing issues to discuss. That rather than continuing to fight over whether or not a box gets drawn around one council member's new house, that instead, the city needs to move forward and solve its problems. You know, if you drive up to Philo Road, which at one time I had reason to do more frequently, you'll notice that it's starting to look like a ghost town. If you traverse the east side of the city, you'll find the university continuing to encroach on the city's tax base. And if you watch the plan commission, or talk to developers in town, you'll find that some still feel that Urbana's a difficult place to accomplish their goals. Yet, here we are, still discussing this issue of the ward map. In fact, now it's morphed into an argument to change our entire system of representation, so that one person has an easier reelection. I have to say that as a citizen of Urbana, I find it embarrassing to watch. In talking with my fellow neighbors about the idea of at-large representation, I find some of them supportive. But when I probe the reasons behind that support, what I find in general is unhappiness with the direction of the city, and in particular, unhappiness with representative in their own ward. I have, of course, when this comes up, reminded them that each and every seat in front of me today will be up for grabs come April, and that they'll soon have an opportunity to vote for new ideas if that's what they're looking for. But what I also mention is that at-large representation, by design, services the wealthy and the powerful at the expense of the average citizen. In fact, it reduces the ability of that average citizen to run for elected office, instead turning the election into a contest decided by financial contributions instead of individual merit. One of the beautiful things about Urbana's ward system is that anyone can run for a seat on the council. All it takes is the most promising ideas and the initiative to talk to everyone you can in your own ward. And since the wards are drawn based up, drawn up based on population, talking with everyone in your ward is a realistic proposition. One of the reasons that districts are drawn up based on objective census data is because subjective projections of population may not come true. For example, back in 1997, some in the city expected Stone Creek to have built out to hundreds of homes by now. Instead, it's closer to 60 than several hundred. Yet, had a ward map been discussed at that time, it's not inconceivable to suspect that a similar argument to the one we're hearing now would have been used to try and influence the composition of the wards. Of course, it would have turned out to be wrong. Some who are advocating for at-large representation claim that voters in East Urbana are being disenfranchised by the current system. Not only is this inaccurate, but the reality is that the ward system ensures that all citizens get to participate in government regardless of their position or financial standing. The addition of at-large seats will purposefully reduce the representation of minorities and students. In the case of minority neighborhoods, at-large seats will dilute their representation, as these new council members are most likely to be drawn from more wealthy parts of the city. In the case of students, they have just as much right to the same basic representation as those who are permanent residents. In other words, one person gets counted equally everywhere, whether they vote or not. I do urge everyone in Urbana to take advantage of that right to vote, and when you do, I suggest you consider voting for those whose actions and intentions will favor addressing the city's problems, over the preference of masking them with massive diversions designed to accommodate the few. And to those in the council who would make this issue the primary topic of the next nine months, I suggest you take a look around the city, talk to your constituents, and ask yourself if there isn't a better way you can spend your time. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Mr., oh, yes.
So, you've been watching, uh, city council meetings for the last year?
Couple of years at least.
Okay. So, you've seen the various meetings that took place on regarding the recent redistricting, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Did you see the meeting that took place when there was the veto override?
Yes.
Okay. So, you understand then that I was offered an accommodation that would have, the house that I purchased into a vacant ward, do you not?
I'm not sure that that was clear from the statements made publicly at the meeting.
Well, that's what happened. And you understand that I rejected that accommodation, do you not?
Well, again, I don't understand the particular accommodation.
Okay, well, I did. Do you understand why I rejected the accommodation?
Well, I suppose it must not have been something you wanted to decide to do.
The reason was because the council refused to deal with the broader concerns for fairness of the map, and I said, "I'm not going to take an accommodation that suits me personally if we don't deal with these broader concerns about equity." Now, tonight, you've suggested that I'm bringing this forward because I'm trying to avoid running against Ms. Huth. Were you aware that I've made the commitment that if Urbana voters decide to create two at-large city council seats, I will not run for those seats? Were you aware of that?
No, but I'll tell you why I, I, I mean, I have the understanding that I do, since you, since you asked.
Please.
Which is that, you know, having watched this thing go on, on the city council for those, for the last several months, what I've seen is that there were two ward maps out there, and that when you purchased a house, or signed a contract to purchase a house, you asked people to make accommodations for that. And when that didn't happen, all of a sudden, even though these maps have been out there for a long period of time, now we have a new concern, which conveniently brings the opportunity to run for new at-large seats. Obviously, I haven't heard you say before that you're not going to run for the at-large seats if they are made available, and, you know, I think that's your decision.
Well, I guess I would encourage you. Anybody else who's listening, before you go throwing around charges of bad faith and political favoritism, make sure that you know what you're talking about. We can disagree over whether or not this is a good idea for Urbana City Council. We can disagree over what's the best system for providing fair and just representation to the people of the city of Urbana, if I can just finish. But I hope that we can do it in a way that's respectful of each other, and that discusses the issues instead of trying to sling mud or question people's motivations.
Well, I should have an opportunity to respond to that.
I'd like to just say, say something. We, we don't want to enter into debate here between the council member and the people at large.
That's, that's true.
Well, I should have an opportunity to at least make one response, which is that, first of all, I did raise several very important issues in my statement, and I hope you heard those. But also, I mean, I would ask you then, is it true that you have not asked anybody, or never asked anybody, to move which house your, was where your house was, according to the ward?
No. It's, it's absolutely true that I asked for an accommodation. As Ms. Chenoweth asked for changes in the ward map and received them, Ms. Huth asked for changes in the ward map and received them. And I also asked for changes in the ward map and received them. So, uh, the, I mean, it's certainly true that many people have asked for changes in that map and received them. I did not. But that's not why we're here tonight, and when push came to shove, I said, "Rather than accept an accommodation and at the same time undermine the fairness of our electoral system, I'm not going to vote for a map, I'm going to vote for a map that I think's fair."
Again, let me interject. We don't want to enter into debate, uh, right at this point, we'll, that'll come later. Well, Mr. Grosser, thank you for your comments. Next on the agenda to speak is John Rinkenberger.
My name's John Rinkenberger, and I live in the 800 block of Scoville Street. Been a resident in Urbana for over 24 years. I'm here this evening to voice my support for allowing a referendum to decide whether or not to have two additional members of the city council elected at large. This concept is really not a new concept in college communities. This afternoon, I took a few minutes and looked at different webpages throughout the Midwest with similar demographics, and found that we had five cities with a lot of commonality. Those were West Lafayette, Lafayette, of course, Champaign, Lansing, Michigan, Bloomington, Indiana. All of these cities have a combined ward and an at-large city government. In addition, the following communities also had at-large members of their council, which is Normal in Carbondale, Iowa City, and State College, Pennsylvania. The voters in these cities found a need to balance out the electoral system and make it fair to all the citizens. Why do we need this type of representation? In my opinion, under a ward system only, in a college environment, many citizens can become underrepresented. This occurs in a transient community of more than 25 percent, who, to be realistic and honest, do not actively participate in civic elections, as much as the other 75 percent do. When ward maps are drawn in such a way that's gerrymandered and manipulated by predominantly student wards, voters are disenfranchised in the other wards. This has happened to Urbana with the new map that was passed over Mayor Satterthwaite's veto this past spring. This new electoral map is not fair and balanced. The only alternative that we have now is to seek a remedy to allow two at-large members for the city. The democratic process of our city is at risk by the control of these overrepresented wards. Some may say that the neighborhoods were a focus of the new map. I could buy into that if all the neighborhoods were kept together. In the new map area, in my area, from Anderson to Philo Road, and from McKinney to Windsor, that was thrown into the new Ward Six, whereas the rest of my neighborhood was put all into Ward Seven, which, by the way, was previously Ward Six. I live in a very well-established neighborhood, and I define that area as south of Florida to Windsor, and from Vine Street to Philo Road. So, my elected member will continue to be the lone Republican minority on the council. Others have suggested the new map was a way to ensure power and dominion over a particular agenda or agendas. I don't, really do not know what the real answer is as to why we have a better map, why we don't have a better map. One thing I know for sure is that as East Urbana continues to grow, the new map will be out of compliance very soon. In the last city election, two wards, Six and Seven, received over 53 percent of the total votes, while two wards, Two and Three, received only 11 percent of the total vote. You can look at it another way. Two wards had over 53 percent of the total vote compared to 47 percent of all of the other five wards combined. My question is, is this true representative government? Who is looking out for all of Urbana regardless of where they live? I've been an avid watcher of council meetings on TV for many years, rather nervous. I must say I have encountered some great entertainment and discussion of issues, and I've noticed too much politics and divisiveness and drama at many of these meetings. This council really needs to have a spirit of compromise, be proactive, be more unified, and involve themselves with a "roll up your sleeves and get involved" attitude in solving our city's problems. By having a couple of at-large members who would look out for all of Urbana makes sense to me. Economic redevelopment of the Sunningcrest area in Lincoln Square is vitally important. Those who may oppose this proposal should understand that I'm not a friend of Mr. Otto, although he's a very friendly man, nor am I speaking as a partisan, because this is really not a party issue. The Republicans have not had a citywide elected official in many years, and I'm a concerned resident who seeks a current system of government in Urbana that's equitable. I realize that it may be human nature to protect oneself in agenda or political philosophy or territory. However, it is personally not, it personally does not affect your power or perceived power of incumbency in the ward that you represent, should we have two elected at-large members. I encourage you to be bigger than yourself and do the right thing. Provide a sense of justice and equality to Urbana residents by supporting the concept of two at-large members. You're only going to allow it to be put on the ballot. Let the people decide. Please don't disenfranchise me and other people. I want to thank you, everyone here, by the way, on the council. I think you've done a tremendous job in terms of your dedication and hard work. Like I said, this is really not a political thing. You guys have done a good job in terms of showing fiscal responsibility to the city. And for you, Mr. Mayor, your leadership over the, over your years of serving here has been commendable. And I just want to thank Mr. Hayes, I ran into him a couple of months ago and ran tool, first time I had a chance to meet him, and had an opportunity to discuss some issues. And he encouraged me to kind of quote-unquote, "Get involved and do something about this issue if I feel strongly about it." And I guess I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rinkenberger, yes.
I just have two questions. When I hear the word disenfranchised, and I've heard that many times in the last week, that's a, that's a very serious word. And we've seen disenfranchisement in this, in this country before. And, and my understanding, and I just looked it up again, just so I would be sure that I knew what it is that I meant when I said that, according to Merriam-Webster, disenfranchisement means you're deprived of the right to vote. So, my question, I have two questions for you. My first question is, were you, when you went to the polls, deprived of the right to vote?
The answer to your question is no.
Okay. So, when you use that word disenfranchised, what is it that you mean when you say that word?
Perhaps it would be better if I were to, um, show it in terms of numbers of people that aren't satisfied, that have been disenfranchised for lack of representation of the city as a whole.
Okay. I guess my next question is, and this is really a question for you and for, for, for all others who support adding seats to the seven-person council that we have, and that is, and I've been asking this question, I haven't gotten a good answer yet about it. Is there, is there some vote that the, that the majority of council members has taken in the last three years, since that's the term that I've been here, that would have been different with two more folks, or, or would have felt, would have made you feel, if it had gone differently, as though you, you had representation? Can you, is there some particular?
Well, I can tell you the one that has really prompted my interest in the city government, and that was the city map. I felt as though the four council members that voted for it was, in my own opinion, and I wasn't involved in any of it, was not willing to compromise and understand some of the other concerns that we had about the map, what I have about the map. I live in a very nice neighborhood, I mean, these homes have been around for 25 years. We're all together. I mean, we're all the same people. And then I looked at the new map, and here I, we got this little square chunk down there in the corner that goes all the way now into the new Ward Six, which is, you know, Deerfield Trails and Myra and Stone Creek, all the way up to wherever you want to go in Urbana. And our neighborhood wasn't intact, and I know that during some of your debates, you had talked in depth, in depth about keeping neighborhoods preserved, and so the representation will be better and clearer, more clearly defined. And that was really the, the one main issue that really kind of got my craw, so to speak.
Okay.
There's been a number of other issues, I don't really want to go into them, we don't have time, but I'd be happy to email you some of my other concerns and issues I've had over the last two years.
I would be particularly interested in that because I, I hear, it is the case that in the last three years, my term on council so far, I have seen more faces from my neighborhood than I have seen from your neighborhood here in this council chambers. And, and I think that my neighborhood, which is West Urbana, is, has shown itself to be well-organized and has come out in force on a number of issues. And so, I guess my question, the question that kind of lingering for me is, is it that East Urbana needs to, to organize and work with their council members the way West Urbana has organized and worked with their council members, or is it, you know, are there votes that we've taken that, that you feel have not represented you? Because, you know, we, we passed Build Urbana, and East Urbana benefited greatly from Build Urbana, and West Urbana's actually paying taxes, and East Urbana residents are not paying as a result of that. So, I guess I'm trying to look at some kind of vote where East, the residents you're speaking of felt like, "We don't have representation here," and I would be interested in hearing that.
I don't want to belabor this for long, because there's many other people, and I'll just email this to you, but my note is, I don't live in East Urbana, I live straight South Urbana. Years ago, it used to be called Southeast Urbana before we had any development. I'm East, I'm South Urbana, and sure, I have plenty of issues, and I'd be happy to email them, but I don't think now's the time.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Appreciate that. And I'm sure you can get Ms. Chenoweth's email address from the net, the, the city, uh, website, yes, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Darrell Halberstad, 1401 East Pennsylvania Avenue.
Joe, I said I'm here and I'm against.
You want to be recorded? Pardon?
I didn't want to speak, I wrote on my thing, I didn't want to speak.
Yes, okay, I didn't.
Since I'm up, I'm anti-counsel.
You're anti-counsel? There's no notation here that says that, but.
Down at the bottom box, I believe, in this place.
Oh, oh, I see. Okay, thank you very much, Darrell. Dick Halberstad is the next to speak.
That's my pod. Yeah. Dick Halberstad, lived in Southeast Urbana for 50 years, lived 1906 Colina. I guess the reasons why I originally got behind the, and brought up the at-large positions was that I believe that Urbana needs more voices, a different voice. The people I talk to, do business with, are always complaining, and I'll agree with that you probably don't see a lot of faces from Urbana, Southeast Urbana, where I live and have lived, but I, I think it's time for that to change. We need to get out and work harder for our opinions. Everybody keeps bringing this up, that Mr. Otto is why we're here. That's not it at all, in my opinion. I mean, when I first got involved in this, this, it wasn't to do with him losing his seat, it had nothing to do with that. And then the more I've heard and read is that he is going to, if he does run, he is going to run in his ward. And we, everybody here has already talked about the numbers, the six and seven, 1,600 votes, the other five wards, 1,500 votes, everybody's talked about that. I, I know without a doubt that come, if we don't, if the council doesn't pass this tonight, and it's, it's just a fact that there will be the signatures here in August to put it, and it will be voted on by the citizens of Urbana this fall. So, you, everybody can go to work sooner at getting qualified people to come up to run for these positions, and people's talked about the politics of it, Democrat, Republican, that's, I mean, we have six against one right now. Two people's not going to change that. They're not going to change that at all, so I, I don't understand why, I think it's a win-win situation, but that's for, because I'm pro it. I'm pro the at-large seats. I see it working in Champaign, I'd like to see it where you could have the at-large seats without a, a political name behind it, Democrat, Republican, just qualified people out here running for a position that I think would speak more for me and my beliefs than what I think our council is doing today. And that's all I have to say. Questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Halberstad.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Jacqueline Waters from 407 West Main regarding council, at, at-large council seats.
Good evening, council persons. I'm here tonight because I was made aware by one of my fellow community members about a discussion to add at-large community, at-large members to this body. And my question has to be, what's the argument? I mean, this council, as far as I understand, is based on population, the constitutional idea of representation based on population. Now, from what I understand, that's what we have here, so I don't understand what the problem is. And when I'm told the arguments, what I'm hearing is, more people in this area or that area vote, therefore, they deserve more representation. That doesn't sound like the Constitution to me. Now, I admit, I'm, I'm from West Urbana, and I'm a proud member of my neighborhood, and I'm very involved. I'm not an owner of property, but I have worked several years to move into Urbana, and I hope someday to be able to afford property there and to own property there and live there. I love Urbana very much. But my question is, is that these students, if that seems to be the problem, the students, don't they have as much constitutional right to choose not to vote and yet have equal representation? They have that right, I have that right, to exercise not to vote and have equal representation here. My other question is, what I enjoy about this council, and what I like about it, is that the people who are here are here because they care passionately, whether I agree with them or not. They're here because they care about the issues, they care about this city. Now, what happens when we create these at-large positions? Can I run for them? Well, technically, yes, but really, no. How much would it cost these people to let people know, who are not in their neighborhoods, who are all over Urbana, about the fact that they're running? Who would have the upper hand here? The person who had the thousands of dollars to throw away, letting everyone know about it? Or the quiet person in her neighborhood who may care very deeply about her community but doesn't have a lot of money? Now, the number I've heard bandied around is, you know, $10,000, $15,000 maybe to run a really effective campaign when you have at-large seats. That's about what I earn per year. Do I deserve less opportunity to run for these positions and make my community members aware of the fact that I care about the city and these issues, and that I have these opinions, and that I should be able to run for these? and that I should be able to run for these positions? What is the problem with the situation we have here? Everyone who's here was voted for. And I ask my fellow community members, if you're not happy with how your opinions are being represented by the individuals in front of you, then let's put that energy into organizing your community and your neighborhood and to changing who's representing you. That's the system, that's the constitutional way, there's nothing wrong here, and I'd like to hear what is wrong here. It's because people aren't voting in certain areas, they have that right. It's based on population, representation by population.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Waters. Next to speak to us is Ann Odom.
I'm Ann Odom, and I live at 308 South Line in Urbana. I'm nervous, this is my first time ever speaking before city council, so. Since the Urbana Discusses Adding City Council Seats article appeared in the paper last Tuesday, I've been planning to come speak at council on the issue. I sat down several times to compose my thoughts and opinions on at-large seats being added to the council, and every time I found myself unable to directly address the issue because of the manner in which it was proposed. Now, we've already had several back-and-forths about what the possible motivations might be, whether or not they involve Mr. Otto's house being where it is, and so I'm not going into all those things again because there's no reason to continue to make those allegations. I do know that we got new news here tonight, which is that there was a lot of assumption that these at-large seats were being proposed because Mr. Otto planned to run for one, and he says that he doesn't. It's easy to say tonight, and maybe harder to do down the road. But way back in April, when the News Gazette published an article on proposed changes to the Urbana city ward map, population changes indicated by the recent census demanded some changes in our city's map. Contrary to what some people would have us believe, ward divisions are based on actual population and not voting population, as we just heard. Every person in every ward deserves and receives by law equal representation, whether or not they vote. Fair and equal representation is a founding principle of this country. The map the city council chose is fair and equal in its ward divisions as based on population information provided by the census, and therefore, the current representation by ward is also fair and equal based on that population information. I've read up a lot on at-large city council seats this past week, and my gut tells me they're a bad idea. I've learned that at-large voting dilutes minority representation, for minorities don't usually have the money to run for the positions and aren't usually represented by the people who are at large. I've learned that at-large voting makes money a key issue in every campaign, and this particular proposal would create two seats that can be bought, and creates the need for expensive media campaigns rather than the grassroots candidate-to-voter campaigns we have normally in ward races. Is the cause of good government served when average citizens cannot run for local government because they'll have to spend $15,000 or more on campaigns campaigning citywide? Are there more compelling arguments for at-large seats in the council? Of course, and are there more against? And I say yes, of course. What I disagree with is that there's time actually between now and the current ballot upcoming to divorce this issue from its possible motivations that I, that I don't trust, and that, those are the issues that have been brought up previously concerning personal gains to be made by Milton Otto. And I don't feel like we can, I don't feel like we can really know exactly what's going on and why it's proposed, and accurately get the information we need about what's going on with at-large seats if we try to get it done in this short amount of time before the ballot. I recommend, and I urge the city council not to place a proposal on this ballot because there's not enough time to look into all these situations, but instead to table it so we can discuss it for possibly the next ballot.
Thank you, Ann. Are there any questions? Thank you very much for your brevity. Next on the agenda to speak is Diane Marlin.
Good evening, my name is Diane Marlin, I live at 2203 Boudreaux Circle. I'm going to start by answering Ms. Chenoweth's question. Was there any particular activity on this council recently that led me to believe that I wasn't being very well represented? Well, I'll give you one example. This isn't why I support the at-large seat, my concern with that is the fairness of the map. Comments and the activity surrounding the underage drinking fines is what left me scratching my head. And I felt that maybe if more teachers or counselors or parents or drug addiction counselors or law enforcement professionals or somebody could, was able to convey to you the, the, how your comments reflected this council in the public, it would have been a good idea. I, I know in your minds you were thinking of 19 and 20-year-old drinkers on campus, but you have to remember when you were talking about, flippantly I might add, about underage drinking and how it's no big deal, your comments were being read by 13 and 14-year-olds. And so that's one of the recent actions that I felt this council took, and the comments you made as a council just didn't represent me as a parent and someone who spent hours in the schools and hours and hours and hours trying to teach my kids to be safe and use alcohol responsibly, so, but that's one example. Okay, I'll go to my comments. There's been a lot of talk about, well, why I support the referendum on at-large seats is my concern with the ward map that was recently approved by the city council. It does not ensure representation based on population. No one is asking for greater representation compared to any other ward in this city. People are asking for equal representation. And I guess we get, what this gets down to, and I've heard the term "actual population", and that depends on how you define "actual." Is it actual population based on the 2000 census, which I understand was used as the framework for formulating these wards? Or do you, can you also take into account population that actually has, growth that has actually occurred in this city since the 2000 census? In which case, there are hundreds and hundreds of homes and apartments that have been built in Urbana and have concentrated in one ward in particular since this 2000 census. So, the population data that you base your map on and that you, you follow the principle of representation by population is, is affected by which population figures you use. I used to, I, I live in Ward Seven. For 33 years, I lived in West Urbana, and six months ago, I moved from Ward Four. And all those years that I lived in West Urbana, I was aware of the growth in other parts of the city, and, and I, and, and I heard comments about how there were different, differences in population. I had no idea of the disparity in the population of some of these wards until I read the mayor's veto message with regard to your map. He pointed out that in Ward Six in Southeast Urbana, which is the largest ward containing all the fast-growing subdivisions, before he redrew the map, Ward Six had 6,800 residents. In contrast, my ward, Ward Four, had 4,300 residents. This is a disparity of 2,500 people. Now, that might not be a whole lot in a big city, but in a small town like Urbana, that's a big difference. And you could argue that people in Ward Six haven't had representation based on population, or at least similar populations, for a number of years. Likewise, Ward Seven, another South Urbana ward, which is currently where I live, had 5,400 people, again, 1,100 more than the smaller Ward Four. I don't want to frame this as a West Urbana versus East or South Urbana, this shouldn't be framed as students versus permanent population, it shouldn't be framed in terms of minorities versus majorities, Republicans versus Democrats. I just think the map that you approved does not provide for representation based on population because you used older population figures that did not reflect the newer construction. In Ward Six alone, in the years 2002 and 2003, and again, this was in the mayor's veto message, there were 91% of all the single-family homes built in Urbana were built in Ward Six, that 301 houses, and about a third of the multifamily units. This represents hundreds of extra people in that ward that may or may not have been included when you drew your maps. So, if you're looking at representation by population, this map could have been better, it could have been fairer. I don't understand why the council chose a divisive course that focuses on political differences instead of common needs. We all face the burden of property taxes in this town, whether we're renters or homeowners. We all pay for the school funding crisis, whether we have kids in school or not. We all have to shop somewhere else because businesses have packed up and left Urbana, along with the sales tax revenue. And there are important issues that affect every citizen. But the map that you passed was not as fair and equitable as it could be, you created a ward in Southeast Urbana, Ward Six, that's extremely large and convoluted, you put every fast-growing subdivision in it that you could, and it's designed to be out of balance almost from the day it takes effect. And for that reason, but we're going to be stuck with it for, what, 10 years? Is that till the next map is drawn? So, how to compensate for the severe shortcomings of this map, and I think it's worth a try to add a couple more voices to the council and a choice at the polls by adding a couple of at-large seats. The seven wards would stay as approved by this council, each electing an alderperson, and everyone would have an opportunity to vote for citizens running at large. And I like the idea of nonpartisan at-large seats, and that's what the case is in Champagne, because we certainly could use less partisan and more cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marlin. Any questions? Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Shirley Stillinger. Welcome, Shirley.
Thank you, Joe. I'm Shirley Stillinger, I live at 1003 South Bucy. I guess I've lived in Urbana 40 years, forever. Quite frankly, I'm surprised that the issue of at-large members has even gotten this far. It seems to me it's a step backwards, an idea that might have come up in the 50s. I mean, I thought we had gotten beyond having at-large representation, and we're really concerned with having representation in which people know exactly who it is that is representing them. Some years ago, and most of you remember, we voted on whether or not to combine the two cities, Champagne and Urbana, and one of the many reasons that I voted against that idea was because of Champagne's form of government. I do not want to live in a city that has at-large, especially the mixture, so that you have some people that represent the entire city, but you only represent your neighborhood. I think it's unfair, and it is much less accountable. If you want people to feel that their elected representatives are accountable, they need to know exactly who they go to. And when I moved to Urbana and I discovered that's how it was, I just loved it. It's, it's a total difference. I don't object to a larger council. I did object, actually, when Urbana reduced its size from 14 to seven. I thought 14 was better, it gave more voices, but it was still 14 people in wards, so that you knew, and then if you had two people representing you and you felt better with one than the other, you could call that person up. As many of you know, I served on the Champagne County Board for 14 years, representing an area of Urbana. Once elected, I really felt that I wanted to, to look at the good of the county, the whole county. Nevertheless, people in my district knew they could call me, write me letters, expect me to justify my votes to them. When you're elected at large, there isn't that, that accountability, and I, I think, well, I think it's a bad idea. There is absolutely no reason in the world to think that at-large people would be elected from the east side of Urbana. As our very first speaker said, I think the odds are greatest that those two at-large would be elected from West Urbana or from South Urbana. That is, elected people who have the money to run a citywide campaign. So, adding two people is, there's no reason to think it's going to get people in the east part of town more representation. I mean, it might, but I, I'm willing to bet money that it would not get representation for them. Question, let me say, that to my, my point is not about the map, it's not about, you know, Milton Otto, it's about a form of government that is not as accountable to the people it represents. I, I think for anybody to say that my argument is false, as the Gazette did tonight, said that anybody opposed to that had false arguments. I realize I'm not coming here to talk to the Gazette, but it, as some people know, it gets, it's, it's been going. My argument is just as valid as anybody else's argument, but I do, but of course, I believe I'm right and they think they're right. If we want people to feel that they are represented, and if there are people in an area that, that don't like the way a vote went, then they need, that's the only thing we can do with any of our elected people, get out and elect somebody else. Come to the council meeting, even if it's after the vote, come and sit here and say, you know, "I think you did a dumb thing." This is a very open group, and, and I think you need to, in order to keep it that way, we need to have people elected, we don't still call them wards, do we?
Yes.
Yes. I was taught in high school that wards were bad, because that was based on, oh, you know, Tammany Hall and that sort of thing. But I've learned, I've learned a difference here in Urbana, and it's a tradition I think is right well for us, and I hope you'll keep it.
Anybody questioning? Shirley, I have a question, please.
Okay.
When you were on the county board, what was the constituency you had?
I had, um-
I mean, in number, if you recall?
Well, I had a third of the county, I mean, no, a ninth of the county, and it was done by numbers. You know, I don't, I don't remember the total.
Nine of the county, and that county being 110,000?
Yeah, so a ninth, a ninth of that.
Be a little over 10,000, 11,000?
I was going to say nine something, but maybe 10. And it was all of Urbana from University South, and then over to, it changed sometimes. See, and it changed with the-
I know, I know. Just curious how you'd compare that with, thank you.
And I didn't hear a lot from constituents, which made me think, okay, they like what I'm doing.
Thank you, Shirley. Next on the agenda is Mike Lehman. Lehman?
Hi, Joe.
Hi.
Anybody else? I'm a resident of Ward Five, it's a East Urbana ward, east of Vine Street, which seems to be of great concern to a certain newspaper in this town, or not in this town, actually, just to be specific. I'm a 17-year resident of Urbana currently. Ward Five is, and by the way, I should mention, I'm also currently a student at the university, and I vote all the time. And, and I bet you're, you're really asking to stir up a hornet's nest with this. So, anyway, just, just a point. Ward Five is mostly a working-class ward. In recent decades, every one of Ward Five's council representatives has lived west of Vine Street. It's simply ridiculous for someone to see this as a problem, when we've been happy to elect effective representatives, most recently Laura Huth. Perhaps that's a problem, she has effectively represented our interests, and maybe that irritates some people, I don't know. Much has been made of the fact that several of the current council members live relatively close to each other, yet each was elected to represent their respective wards. It is an illusion to claim that this fact somehow means that they have acted only in the interest of those living close to Lille School, or some other BS. I challenge those supporting this proposal to present any substantive evidence that these good- these good people have favored this part of the city over the city as a whole. This whole affair is a bogus issue with no legal basis. Perhaps those pushing this can be more explicit in describing the political basis of this misguided proposition, because that's what this is all about. A power struggle initiated against elected representatives who have acted independently in the best interest of their constituents. Just to demonstrate the level of pettiness involved, despite the recent rather public relations campaign to initiate this dramatic shift in the political process in Urbana, is my understanding, at least as of last night, that our council members had not even been provided with the text of this proposition. There are no public hearings scheduled, simply a campaign of rhetorical sophistry from an out-of-town newspaper that shall remain nameless. They should be reminded that this is Urbana, not east Champaign. And most damning from the point of view of the fair democratic process, those most affected by having their representation curtailed students at the university are out of town, even though each of them is legally entitled to every bit as much representation as the wealthiest homeowner in Stone Creek. Only totalitarian governments operate in such fashion. I presume that our council will react tonight as any American would to such chicanery, given the chance, they will oppose it. If there really is growth in east Urbana that requires a reassessment of the ward maps, as has been claimed even here tonight, why has the mayor not requested a special census so that this decision can be made based on the facts? I think it's because those pushing this idea know that the facts will likely not support their tenuous arguments, despite the claims made tonight. I'll remind everybody, we recently went to war on the basis of fabricated evidence, looking for weapons of mass destruction that did not exist. What's being proposed is basically a snipe hunt in search for a weapon of mock democracy. In many ways, this raises the odor of past corruptions in our political system. I think some of those have been addressed by Shirley and some other folks. For instance, our students may be entitled to only three-fifths as much representation as a tiny cabal supporting this ill-conceived idea. Are Jim Hayes constituents supposed to just shut up and suck it up when their forebears, sadly, have already been suggested to such twist as this proposition at least partially resurrects this honorable political idea of disguised unequal representation that dishonors us all? This proposal definitely raises issues concerning application of the 1965 Voting Rights Act. Those proposing this may wish to cheap out and flim-flam us without paying for a special census, but do they have a budget for defending the spoon-dog on federal court if it should disgracefully come to pass in this city? If there is not enough representation on this council for the taste of sun, then let's go back to the ways things used to be in Urbana, with two council members per ward. This would at least be a legitimate argument that does not diminish anyone's influence at the expense of another. Finally, let's look at the root of the problem. In the last city election, overall voter turnout was less than thirteen percent of the city's overall population. And I wish I had a more exact figure for the percentage of registered voters that this represents, but Mark Sheldon's lame website cannot provide that for me. It is true that there were a few hundred more people voting in the wards favored under this proposal than in the ones that are disfavored under the proposal, but it's still nothing to brag about. You know, the level of turnout is only a few percent more than the wards that are alleged to be the quote-unquote "problem." It would seem to be more useful to run a serious citywide get-out-the-vote drive if the concern is really about fair, adequate representation. Yet the law provides for the drawing electoral districts solely on the basis of population as enumerated in the latest census figures, regardless of how convenient and may seem to do it otherwise. Instead, we see this disgraceful proposal because a few people seem to think they can do otherwise to suit their personal political goals. There is no legal basis for this proposition. There's a political one, true, but there is no legal basis for it, and there is no legal basis to undermine the democratic process in our city by passing this.
Thank you, Mike, for your apolitical commentary.
Thank you, Joe.
Is there any questions? Next on the agenda is Alex Christopher.
I've been given a tough act to follow. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Christopher Alex, and I live at 301 East George Huff Drive in Urbana. I've lived in the Urbana-Champaign area for twenty years, the majority of which, including the last nine, have been spent in Urbana. I'm a downtown business owner, a former member of the Urbana Community Development Commission, and a current member of the Urbana Plan Commission. I've had the opportunity to make recommendations to the city council and work with members of the council on numerous issues. I'd like to start by saying that I'm actually very pleased with the quality of the representation that I've received from my aldermen over the years, and I suspect many others in all wards of the city feel the same way. Although in these increasingly partisan times, one tends to focus one's attention on what is wrong, I believe there are many things that are right about Urbana, as evidenced by the fact that I and most of the people in this room have chosen Urbana as a place to live and to build businesses, raise families, or further their education. In the last year alone, the city has made significant strides in revitalizing our downtown, reached an agreement with the Housing Authority on Lakeside Terrace redevelopment, created the East Campus Commercial District, expanded the Urban League's role in the development of high-quality, affordable housing, and developed the first new comprehensive plan for the city of Urbana since 1982. So in my opinion, the city is moving in the right direction in many key areas. That being said, I fully support the effort to add two at-large members to the Urbana City Council. At-large representation will strengthen the council in several ways. First, it will give every citizen of Urbana, not one, but three council members accountable to him or her, available to respond to comments or questions or work on his or her behalf. In a community that prides itself on diversity of opinion and creative solutions to community problems, we should not expect one alderman to represent the diverse and potentially conflicting viewpoints of the several thousand citizens in a ward. Second, it will add two council members who are accountable to the city as a whole and who have a mandate to make decisions based on a citywide view. Although I know that each of the current council members considers the impact of their decisions on other wards, the system is deliberately set up so that each alderman's primary responsibility is to be an advocate for their individual ward. The ward system theoretically facilitates the election of a council with a maximum diversity of backgrounds and political viewpoints. However, as recent events remind us, with only seven wards covering a city of thirty-seven thousand, drawing a ward map which translates this theory into reality is much easier said than done. Adding at-large seats will preserve all the advantages of ward representation while balancing it with members with a mandate to represent the city as a whole. Finally, the process of electing at-large members will create an opportunity for essential public debate on the challenges facing the entire city, issues which must rise above the level of ward boundaries and individual political viewpoints, and which, given the limited scope of a ward campaign, are only now addressed during the context of a mayoral race. The majority of my service to the city has been in the areas of planning and community development. In those areas alone, the city faces major challenges. In the short term, these include redevelopment of the so-called near-north neighborhoods, including Lakeside Terrace, Five Points, North Race Street, and the former Gil Sports Properties, revitalization or redevelopment of the Sunny Crest Philo Road corridor, and smart management of new residential and commercial development in east and southeast Urbana. Longer-term challenges include completing the Olympian Drive corridor, improving interstate access for east Urbana on Route 130, and working with the University of Illinois on the redevelopment of Orchard Downs. These issues are not ward versus ward issues and should not be the means for furthering individual political agendas. There are challenges that affect the health and welfare of the entire city, and they must be addressed as a united city. I believe that at-large representation on the council will make the council larger, stronger, more diverse, more focused on the city as a whole, and better prepared to meet these challenges. I encourage the Urbana City Council to bring the proposed referendum to the ballot for the November election, and allow the voters of Urbana to decide the question of at-large representation, and I encourage the citizens of Urbana to join me in supporting the effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions? Yes, I have any?
Chris, I have a, it's a similar kind of question. It's, you know, I hear the argument, and it's one that I take very seriously, that council members may, because they're elected from wards, may not be representing the city as a whole. And this is something that I feel like I struggle with all the time. I have a set of neighbors and constituents, they want a particular thing. There's a larger picture going on, especially when it comes to economic development. There's a lot of folks in my neighborhood who don't necessarily want to see growth. As you've seen with my voting record, I've been pretty pro-growth with my voting record. So I guess the issue has been either, is there some kind of time in the last three years that this council has really dropped the ball? I mean, you were very generous to us with the number of things that we have accomplished in the last couple of years, and we do have a lot of challenges before us, but is there, you said in theory, at-large members would kind of look out for the city as a whole. I expect all of these council members who are sitting before you to look out for the city as a whole, and when we're not doing that, we're not really doing our jobs. At the same time, we don't forget our neighbors and our constituents, because we live right next to them, and, you know, they can drive or walk around the corner and talk to us. So is there something in particular that's driving this, some thing that you feel like two additional members would be addressing that is not being addressed currently?
I think by asking your question, you've framed it very well, and that's that I think anybody who is representative of a particular ward is going to feel this conflict, is going to be, on the one hand, obligated to represent, you know, to the greatest extent possible, the interest of the people living within their ward, but at the same time, to, you know, consider the impact of the decisions that are made by the entire council on the entire city as a whole. And I think a hybrid system in which we have both ward representatives and at-large representatives will go a long way to help alleviate some of that conflict. I mean, I was personally very sympathetic to you, watching you handle the issues related to Walmart. I know that a lot of the people from your ward were very opposed to that, and, you know, I thought you handled that well. But I think that the fact that people feel that they're put in this position where, you know, I want to represent my ward, but at the same time, I really want to be able to look at this thing from the city as a whole, can only be helped rather than hurt by this proposal.
I just have a follow-up, thank you. I have a follow-up question, which is, do you have concerns about at-large representatives needing to raise somewhere on the order of fifteen thousand dollars to effectively reach thirty-eight thousand, forty thousand people in the city of Urbana?
I really don't. I mean, I think if that were, if that were, if that were a concern, that would be a concern for all the citywide offices. Yet we don't elect a mayor from each ward, we don't elect a city clerk from each ward, and so on. I think that it's quite reasonable to have campaigns that are organized as more ward-oriented, neighborhood-oriented campaigns, as well as campaigns that are organized on a citywide basis. As I think I said in my statement, one of the most attractive things to me about having at-large seats is that in the campaigns for those seats, the candidates, and I would hope there would be many candidates, would be forced to articulate and create discussions about their opinions on the direction of the city as a whole, which I think tends to, you know, because, and one of the previous speakers made a good point, that ward-based campaigns can be run at a grassroots level. They're typically run in neighborhoods where people know each other and are very passionate about the things that are going on in their neighborhoods. But I think because ward campaigns are conducted on such a small scale, there are issues of economic development, issues of growth, issues of community welfare, which don't get adequately discussed during those campaigns. I would hope that in an at-large campaign, those would come more to the forefront.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Next person to speak is Paul Mute.
One syllable.
Pardon me? Mute?
Okay.
Thank you.
I live in the 200 block of West Illinois, which is only a block and a half away from Lille School, so take it for what it's worth. In the land of Lincoln, we have a particular example of at-large districting from Springfield, which was overturned by the NAACP after it was pointed out that no one had, there had been no minority representation in the land of Lincoln's capital since Reconstruction, when it was appointed. Now, that was completely at-large, that was not partially at-large, but I don't know why people want a little bit of a bad thing, because it does concern me to raise fifteen grand, and if by some reason the referendum does get put on by petition and does pass, I suggest this council do something, and it's Rube Goldberg, I don't advocate it, because I don't advocate at-large districting, but if there were some way to have public financing, some kind of matching system, matching small donations for people running at-large, that would at least do something to remedy the inequity of having large, landed gentry, rich folk, as it were, to sway the election. I think the mayor is where the vision for the city as a whole should be, and a strong mayor can have a plan, and particular ward people can associate themselves with that plan or not, depending on whether they think it's a good plan or not. So the discussion can be had for the overall view, and maybe there should be more of that. As far as this preemptive districting for areas where there's more rapid growth, I mean, I think the staff of the city is advocating, and I hope they do a good job of it, of having more residential dwellings in the downtown area, more cooperative housing, whatever it takes, something above Lincoln Square. But to, if you're going to start predicting where the growth is going to be, you shouldn't just look to the golf courses. You should look to center city and trying to do something about that. I think that's about all the points that haven't been emphasized. Again, I stand very much against this idea of at-large districting. I think it should be opposed in Champaign, if somebody's watching out there.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions? Thank you. Next on the agenda, and I must compliment you folks for being brief, it helps, we have so many people who like to speak. Mahiko Covington. Mahiko?
My name is Mahiko Covington, and I live at 805 South Race Street, so I'm actually a member of Ward Five. And I would like to echo what other people had said, first off, that the representation is based on the number of actual people that live in a district, it is not based on the rate of change, or the turnout in a given district. And so if the population in one part of our town is truly increasing, and I think that the representation will increase naturally when we have the next census, or if they want to start doing that more often, that's something that maybe could be discussed. My main point is that it seems a lot of the argument is saying that the problem is a lack of voter turnout in, say, District X, so that it's feared that those elected from District X do not represent the true people, or the true will of the people in District X, because there's a lot of people being silent, and so those who have actually gone out to vote have undue influence. However, if that is truly the problem, then the remedy should be to increase turnout of these silent people in District X, rather than to dilute the too-powerful voice of the loud members of District X with entirely different, other loud voices from Districts Y and Z, which it seems is the goal of this whole thing. One other point is, we just got done changing the school board from at-large to district representation, and I'm wondering how this is any different from that. And my final point is that there's a lot of talk being bandied around about students, and I can say, just observing where I am and being on community mailing lists and walking around my neighborhood, I can tell you that it's certainly not students who are moving into town, only students who move into town and leave in about five years. The average moving time for Americans these days is five years. So the idea that it's only students seems a little off to me. The other thing I would mention in that regard is that, you know, if students move out and new ones move in, I think there are some legitimate shared concerns for that population, and that those concerns deserve to be represented. I certainly wouldn't want to go back to the days when you had apartment listings in the paper and whatnot, saying, "No students need apply," and whatnot like that. My final point is just that I also agree with some of the things that Shirley said, that if we want to have more than one person to go to in a given district, we could go back to the system we had in the '70s, where there were two aldermen for each ward, and then you would have a choice of people to visit. But the main thing I think this should be done is to try and increase the voter turnout from all over the city, for people electing the representatives of their ward, so that the ward is as representative as possible of the people who are living there. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Mahiko. Next on the agenda to speak is Belgenfields. Mr. Belgenfields.
I want to speak briefly about two things, actually, so I'm going to break the stride a little bit, because I'm a little concerned about the addition to the conflict of interests prohibited that Mr. Otto, from whom I have great respect, has drafted. And I'm particularly concerned about a sentence in there, which is, "For purposes of this sub-paragraph, a person shall be deemed to be financially..." sub-paragraph, a person shall be deemed to be financially interested in any contract, grant, appropriation, or legislative enactment that is made to or for the benefit of that person to any firm, partnership, association, corporation, or cooperative association as to which the person is a board member, director, or officer, or to any family member," and then the definition of family members is expanded. What concerns me, Mr. Otto, about this, and what I'd ask you to perhaps give some thought to, is that it's so broad that perhaps someone who is involved in a nonprofit organization, I'll use an example of Councilperson Pat, for example, being in the tenants' union, it seems to me that something could come up under this, and one could argue that she had, on a housing issue, it could be argued that simply by virtue of her working in the tenant union, she should not be part of the discussion or part of the vote. So I wonder if that couldn't be modified. I think it's too great a split between the council and the legislative activity of the council, and some of the civic activity that's going on in our society. So I would just ask you if you might not consider that a little bit. Then I do want to address the issue that almost everybody, or everybody so far, has addressed, which is this at-large issue, and I was very much involved in the process of drawing up the maps for School District 116, Urbana School Districts, when we did move from an at-large to a ward system, because it was felt that minority people were very disfavored by that system. It's interesting, because the same argument, four people are always living around Leo School. Leo School seems to come into these debates, no matter what we're talking about, it's always who lives around Leo School. But the problem has been pointed out, that that would mean that people of substantial wealth, people who did have fifteen thousand dollars available to them, would be the people who would be able to have these at-large seats, which are going to be more expensive. And down the line, it could negatively impact access to minority population. As a political scientist, one thing that I've been taught is the theoretical arguments only get you so far if you're talking about what's a better form of government, this, or that. But they're also, one is led to examine why certain arguments are made at particular points in time. And I'm concerned, because there has been no secret that there's been a division on this council on many issues, and it has not been a partisan division, it has been a division in the way people approach certain of the problems here. And it is no secret that the mayor has not been satisfied with some of the outcomes of the elections. He did support the sitting member at that time, as opposed to Ms. Chenoweth in her campaign, and then he tried to defeat Councilperson Huth. Those efforts of the mayor did not succeed. And what concerns me very much is that if the at-large seats are added, that this very likely would confer upon the mayor greater veto power. And I don't think that's a reason to do it, to change the political complexion of it, and to basically try to seek, as it were, a constitutional amendment to change the basic functioning of the council. So I would urge you to think very, very hard before you propose something of this magnitude. I think other options were presented, if you feel the representation is skewed, such as plural representation from each district. I very much like plural representation, but I would hold on to the districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belgenfield. Any questions? No, thank you. Next on the agenda, now, pretty close to nine o'clock, maybe very soon, we might take a five-minute break, don't you think? Not right now, but I mean, coming up. Yes.
Just because, I guess after public input, members of committee can speak, and I did want to, I was asked by Curtis Pettijohn to read the following statement to the record. First, I'd like to thank and apologize to Ms. Chenoweth for reading my words. Work is keeping me from attending this evening's meeting. I feel that expanding the council is not only unnecessary, but a misguided idea. Representation, as it now stands, is in accordance with the law. At-large aldermen will dilute minority representation and introduce money as an influence in elections. For those who think that students shouldn't count, go check the law books. Our elections are now nonpartisan, and yet I hear much complaining about the lack of Republicans on this council. Mayor Satterthwaite and Councilperson Otto seem anxious to create more Republican representation on this city council. Yet I have never in my life found a Republican who is worried about increasing a Democrat's representation anywhere. I have heard accusations flying of people trying to protect their, quote, "power base." Is that not what is motivating this attempt to change our council? It certainly looks like it from here. In conclusion, I say, it ain't broke, so don't try fixing it. And that was Curtis Pettijohn of 907 South Orchard, and I believe the clerk has a copy of that before her.
May I suggest that some of these letters we have received, and people have asked us to speak, perhaps we can do that during the debate time, and let these folks who are here speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that we were at the end of public input, and you were requesting a break.
That's okay, no.
I apologize.
That's all right. I was saying that maybe we'll have a break soon, because it's getting a little late. Next item on the, let's see, next person, rather, is Walter Matherly.
My name is Walter Matherly, I live at 402 West Nevada, and I'm retired. I lived here for nine years. History is not one of my best teachers. I hope the distinguished members of the council and others here will find a couple of references to the fairly recent past helpful. The at-large voting process is mostly referred to in the electoral procedure literature, by its full name, the winner-take-all at-large voting system. It couldn't be better named. Nowhere where the system has been used, the winners have taken the opportunity to concentrate power in the hands of the dominant faction in the electorate. The best, nearest, perhaps most egregious example, as someone mentioned a moment ago, is Springfield, where representation of the poor and racial minorities became abysmal before local activists were able to mount persuasive efforts to correct it. It is to their website that I owe this portrait of the at-large dinosaur, which I will give to you to hand one to each member. Even here in Urbana, a local effort was able to empower groups of geographically disfavored, not disenfranchised, but disfavored, poor and racial minorities a few years ago, by creating school board voting sub-districts, a system that is gathering influence almost as we speak. Already, the power of the winners who took all, in the old days, for so many years, has begun to fray at the edges, as the increased power of the formerly disfavored to improve the quality and extent of their own representation grows. And now the Urbana City Council wants to turn back the clock, to take retrograde action, and to return to the bad old days, it's hard to believe. Now, this is not a bee in a few local progressive bonnets. In fact, back in 1967, US Congress passed a law requiring states to use single-member district elections, taking the opposite tack from that taken by proponents of at-large winner-take-all voting procedures. Major justification for the law was, not surprisingly, to prevent southern states from using winner-take-all at-large elections, to dilute the vote of African-Americans, and to keep the cost of running for office within the reach of potential candidates of modest income. And it still is. For God's sake, let's not get mired down in a demonstrably unfair, undemocratic piece of voting history again.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Matherly. Next on the agenda to speak is Cope Comston.
I'm Cope Comston, 402 West Nevada Street, and I also oppose the proposal for at-large representation on the city council, and I've had the same experience, while that was just my husband speaking, about voting out at-large in the school district, and it has made an immediate difference with minority representation on the school board. So I see that there was overwhelming support in Urbana for that, only two precincts did not carry the motion. I also do just one little thing, I don't think anyone has said, I think that every person on the city council represents everyone in Urbana. I mean, if I have something that I'm particularly concerned about, I will contact as many people as I think I need to contact to try and get my point across. So the idea that you're only represented by someone from your ward, I think, is a little bit overplayed. This is a small community, we know each other, we talk to a lot of people, and I think that influence spreads beyond just the wards. But I think that this particular proposal is a political solution to a very specific set of circumstances and a specific set of personalities, and I think the timing is terrible. There are immediate issues facing Urbana that we really have to address. I mean, I'm on the school board, and we need every penny we can get, we need every business we can get in Urbana. I'm glad that also on the same agenda is the report of economic development on Phila Road, I read that packet from cover to cover, and there was nothing on the agenda specifically describing this, so I was not able to see what the specifics of that were. I think it, something that is this important to the community should be, there should be something on the packet about that. But what I want to say also is that this is a very critical election coming up in November, and I want people's energy and attention to be on larger issues than political infighting in my own city, and so I really ask you all to please defeat this proposal. We need every bit of energy we can get for presidential issues, for other issues that are on this ballot, and I don't want to spend my time working on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Cope. Any questions? Nope. Next on the agenda to speak is Rupert Evans.
I'd prefer to speak on the matter of library.
I see, okay. Rupert, would you like to speak now?
No, I'd rather wait till we've finished up on the agenda.
Okay, all right. I couldn't hear what you said. John Varela.
First of all, I'd like to thank the council for giving me this opportunity to speak. Next, I'll try to talk a little bit about what some of the other people have mentioned before, and then I'll get on to a prepared statement. One of the first things that was asked is, Ms. Chenoweth asked specifically, why hasn't East Urbana been able to organize itself? Well, one answer that comes very clearly to my mind is that this council has long been dominated by members of West Urbana. In fact, if I remember correctly from last Tuesday's news gazette, Ms. Patton had said that this has been the case since 1989. So regardless of whether this issue passes, I think it's a great sign that we're seeing that our city is beginning to organize, and so for that, at least, I think this issue would be a good issue. The second one I'd like to talk about is what Shirley said, and this was the big issue of accountability. This is one of the biggest reasons why I'm for at-large wards. One of the questions has been said, if people choose not to vote, that's their constitutional right, and that's absolutely correct. But what always worries me, and this worries me at any level of elections, is when you have such a disproportionate share of people not coming out, I really begin to worry about whether the representatives actually are accountable. Along that same lines, Ms. Schillinger, please forgive me if I get the name incorrectly, asked, would the at-large city council members be accountable? And the simple question to that is, do we think that the mayor is accountable? If we think the mayor is accountable, then I see no reason why an at-large city council member would not be accountable. Okay? Another couple of, another statement I want to clarify a little bit, what Ms. Marlin said, according to the official census data, each new ward in this district should have approximately 320 new people. You'll have to pardon me that I don't have the exact figure, I did read the exact figure at last week's city council meeting. As she said, ninety-five percent of the home growth had occurred in Ward Six. Just to give you a number on that, that's 300 single-family homes have occurred in Ward Six alone. So even if only one person is living in a home, which I think we can all agree is typically not the case, then that alone almost accounts for the growth that should be happening, and once again, these are coming from census figures completely, the single-family home growth is coming from the mayor's veto message. So I do think we really do have to deal with population growth, and this is already homes in the grounds, this is confirmed population growth. Another question was asked, what specific issue could I say that I did not think that the current city council is addressing in terms of the entire city? Well, one thing came immediately to my mind, this was during the actual passage of the ward map, Mr. Wayland proposed an amendment that I think quite few members thought was a very nice amendment. Currently, Ward Six and Seven have kind of two fingers poking into each other. Mr. Wayland proposed to eliminate these two figures. As it was brought up and noted in the council meeting, both of these two areas have roughly the same population. I can hold up a map to show you. Basically, the one area would be this section of Phila Road, and the portion of Ward Seven that's east of Phila Road, this would be interchanged with the portion of Ward Six that's west of Phila Road. We all agreed that, or everyone at the council agreed that this map would look much better, kind of prettier, if that were to pass, but yet it did not pass. So I think that's one concrete example we can look at as to some of the problems that are occurring. Finally, I know this is not council business at all, but someone noted that the county clerk's office doesn't list what percentage of the voters actually voted in terms of the number registered. That information is now available on Mark Sheldon's website, and I think we should actually give Mark Sheldon quite a bit of credit for making this information available to all of us, very easily in our homes via the web. A third point that several people have brought up, but that I think doesn't get enough coverage, is several people have mentioned this is a small community. While there are going to be some costs in running an at-large city council election, I don't think this is like a senate race in California, where you're going to need a massive aerial bombardment in order to win even an at-large seat. I think some good honest campaigning, especially some work by both parties, to get out the message and rally around both citywide candidates, will allow us to have that grassroots feel while still maintaining some at-large members. I'd now like to go on to my main remarks. I am a student at the university, and I agree with this, because I think this is a great opportunity to get student representation. Where do you live? It's a simple question, but one that goes to the heart of student representation on the Urbana City Council. One of the attractions of campaigning against my fellow students is their homogeneity. Most students are young, they have similar interests regardless of political affiliation, and perhaps most importantly for a campaigner, they congregate together. While two attractions hold in city council elections, the third most important is substantially weakened. Without that question, where do you live, campaigning on campus is useless. What's worse is that even simple answers don't work. Do you live in a dorm? It's not a good answer, or a good question, because there are dorms in four separate wards. PAR, Pennsylvania Avenue Residence Halls, and LAR, Lincoln Avenue Residence Halls, are in Ward One. in Ward 1. ISR, the Illinois Street Residence Halls are in, is in Ward 2. Hendrick House, a university-certified housing complex, basically a private dorm, is in Ward 3. And FAR, Florida Avenue Residence Hall, and Orchard Downs, a university-owned graduate student complex, are both in Ward 4. The questions get even more involved if students live in an apartment or rent a house. Many students either live directly west or directly north, spring a large number of students between the four wards with a dorm. The reoccurring problem of needing to bring your ward map wherever you go occurs just at the very beginning of trying to campaign on campus for a city council spot. Some people may wonder how much of effect this question has. One answer comes from the recent primary. Cutting 2 is the precinct directly north of the main quad and has mostly students as residents. Even though at the time of the primary, both presidential races were cited, there was still an active presence by the carry campaign on the quad, and the turnout was 92 voters, still very low turnout, but almost three times the number of voters who voted in the 2001 election. Another reason for the redistricting actually helping students' population comes from the recent redistricting of the State House of Representatives. One of the arguments used for creating the new donut, 103rd District, was precisely this issue, splitting the campus vote between the two districts. It was thought that by having a single, a single state representative district for the campus would increase student turnout. Students may have more participation than their, than their, students may have more representation than the participation up to now would warrant, but without an at-large representative, there's no one to work the quad for the council election, and correspondingly, little effective representation for students on the council. Let's give the question, where do you live, an easy answer in the upcoming council elections. Urbana.
Thank you, John. Yes, Ms. Patton.
Where do you live?
Where do I live? I live in West Urbana, 404 West High Street.
Thank you.
It happens to be a precinct that is divided under the current ward maps into, between three wards and under the new one in between two wards.
Actually, excuse me, that's not correct. Precincts are not divided between more than two wards.
Oh, okay.
But that's, that's just a legal thing, and that's actually the case.
Okay.
Yes, Chenoweth?
One thing that you may be, if you, if you do want to run in student districts, you might want to be aware of is that on campus, at the student dorms, candidates are not actually allowed to campaign in the dorms. And this is something that I think might actually lend itself to one of the reasons why there's low voter turnout. I have thousands and thousands of students, undergraduates, in FAR, PAR in my ward, and when I went to campaign to go door to door to speak with them directly, University of Illinois policies prohibited me from actually speaking to potential constituents of mine. So something to be aware of in the future, the dorms are very, very restrictive. You cannot put anything up on the wall without permission. You cannot go door to door and knock on doors, and that may very well lead to one of the reasons why we see thousands and thousands of students who have absolutely no idea who is running in local elections and who they may have, may be their options for voting for.
Well, to me, that is exactly why we need the at-large representatives. The at-large representatives will have to deal with the issue of going, well, we would like them, of course, to go knocking on every door, but one of the issues is by being able to advertise on the quad very quickly without this crucial question, where do you live, that many students may not be comfortable asking to, or may not be completely comfortable answering to a total stranger, we've eliminated that vote and allowed for some representation to be brought to the students, even if the university makes it difficult for us.
Thank you, John. Next person to speak is Mark Ensland. Ensland, is it?
Hello, my name's Mark Ensland. I live at Tua 7, West Indiana. I've lived here for 30 years. I came to Urbana as a student and decided to continue living here. And I have two, two comments to say in opposition to the idea of at-large representatives being added to this council. And there are comparisons to other structures, one's hypothetical and one's actual. The hypothetical one is imagine that someone in the US Congress proposed adding some out, some at-large representatives. This would be a rather absurd notion, and I consider that that absurdity is compared to, to the absurdity of this particular proposal for Urbana. And with the actual comparison, I've been following what has been going on in the last several decades with the Champaign School District and problems with inadequate care for African-American students there. One of the components of that problem, which has led to a lawsuit that's still gone to a consent decree, which is still operating there, is the at-large structure of the Champaign School Board. And I consider that to be an argument against implementing this here in Urbana in the city council. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Mark. Next to speak is Howard Law. Did I pronounce that right, Howard? How is it?
It's Law. My name is Howard Law. I reside at 1608 South Smith Road. I come to the committee tonight not to discuss members at large, I'm sorry, but I have other business to discuss. I'm a resident of the Savannah Greens subdivision, and we approached the board tonight to elicit your help in solving a problem that we're having out there. Some of the history of the problem before I really get into it, we have a, let me state the problem, then we'll go back into the history. The Savannah Green subdivision is currently installing streetlights in that subdivision, which are designed about 24 feet high, polished steel light posts. We oppose to the installation of that kind of lighting out there, and let me go back to some of the history and some of the information that I have as to why, as homeowners out there, we oppose the installation of this style of lighting. Be aware that we're not opposed to having streetlighting out there, it's just the type of streetlighting that is being installed. In 2001, Mr. Mark Saldonek approached this council with a proposal to build a subdivision in the city of Urbana called Savannah Greens. Mayor, sir, you were on the council at the time and heard these proposals. At the time that the original ordinance and proposals were submitted to this council, one of the statements that were in the, in the proposal was that the subdivision, the developer of the subdivision would install ornamental lighting. At that time, the city engineer made a comment that he didn't know that it, that if ornamental lighting would meet the standard for Illinois Power and Light. So the final amended, the ordinance was amended to read that the developer agrees to pay for and install street lighting is mutually agreed upon between the developer and the city engineer. And in my discussions with Mr. Kowalski, as a city planner, he stated that the, he had had discussions with the city engineer, and numerous styles of ornamental lighting were discussed with the, with the developer of that subdivision, and the subdivision developer actually chose to install the type of lighting that is going out there based upon the cost of doing so. Our argument in that, in opposition to that occurring is related to the advertising that has been given to the homeowners out there, people that have come out there to buy homes. There's about 150 homes currently built out there with two other phases being constructed at this time. The lone real estate agent out there is Mr. Edward, or, excuse me, Mr. Victor Edward Armstrong II. His father, Victor Edward, I'm sorry, Victor Edward Armstrong III is the sole realtor for the Savannah Greens subdivision in Urbana. His father, Mr. Victor Edward Armstrong II, is a real estate agent in Bloomington-Normal, who also does real estate for the St. Agnes Home Construction Company, which is the builder, primary builder for the Savannah Greens subdivision in Urbana. I have numerous websites in which Mr. Armstrong has made statements verbally, straight from his statement is that the developer will provide and install ornamental street poles throughout the subdivision. That is not happening. That is not what we were advertised to happen. That is not what this advertisement says will occur. One of the other things that he states is that the Savannah Greens subdivision in Urbana, not in Normal, in Urbana, was based upon this traditional city layout in Savannah, Georgia, based upon the book, the Charleston Savannah and Coast Island book by Cecily MacMillan. If you take a look at the covers of that book, you'll see ornamental street lighting. So if you take a look and read any of this advertisement, the first thing that goes through your mind is that you're going to have ornamental, ornamental street lighting that looks like this. I've had the opportunity to look at pictures and designs of the Savannah Green of Normal subdivision, which is, was built prior to the Savannah Greens of Urbana, was actually the subdivision in which my wife and I were taken to to view the homes that we currently bought out in the subdivision in Urbana. Those pictures of the, of the development out there do show ornamental street lighting as depicted in the pictures based upon this book. What we ask the council to do is to take steps to cease and desist the installation of street lighting that is not in line with the advertising that has been put on the books by Mr. Armstrong, that has not been, which is apparently being decided upon by St. Agnes, Mr. Armstrong's father, Mr. Mark Saldonek, who is the owner of St. Agnes Homes.
Excuse me, Mr. Law, I have a sort of an answer for you.
Okay.
I heard this from a number of, of people over there in Savannah Green, an area that I represent, and they told me that, you know, their concern for the streetlights, and I talked to Mr. Gray, you might want to do this for your own edification. Talk to Bill Gray, who's sitting over here, head of our engineering department, and he'll explain perhaps, maybe to your satisfaction, the history of what happened here. But the fact of the matter is, I mean, this is, the developer was showing people ornamental lights, but they were, they were lights in the yards rather than streetlights per se like the, like, streetlights that are required by state law. So, and those that were unacceptable to the city. So that, I would suggest that you talk to Mr. Gray and see if you can get some better information, and if you can't, give me a call.
Well, Mr. Wayland, we've, we've gone around and around about this. They're currently running wires out there. This was discussed with you, I know on previous occasions.
Sure.
I have discussed it with Mr. Kowalski, and Mr. Kowalski did discuss it with Mr. Gray. As I earlier stated, there were other designs which were acceptable to the city to meet the standard of street lighting that is ornamental. If you go two blocks north of this city hall, you will find ornamental street lighting. There is no reason, no reason whatsoever to put 24-foot polished steel light posts out in the middle of, of our subdivision when there is already a standard for ornamental lighting, and it's already advertised that the homeowners in that area will have ornamental lighting. We don't care if it's a black post or if it's concrete pillar with a ball on the top of it. We want something other than a polished steel post sitting in our front yards. And I think that that subdivision owes us that, not only because that was what they initially proposed, not only because that's what they know that they can already do, because Illinois Power and Light have already accepted those kinds of lighting in the Normal subdivision, in Peoria, and in other areas around the state that meet that standard. And I think that if we as a city and we as a subdivision let them walk through the door and do whatever they think that they think they're going to get away with and pull the wool over this council's eyes, you have a whole book of complaints against this company, and everybody's turning a blind eye. I think time has come that you hold them accountable, not only for their advertising, but for their proposals, and they're wanting to build more subdivisions in this area. And if we as a council are just going to buy in to whatever they want to do...
Not everybody's turned a blind eye. I must tell you, I've talked with a number of people, and I'm very concerned for you and for your neighbors. And I would suggest, though, rather than anybody else, talk to Bill Gray. At least get that information.
I've talked to Mr. Gray.
You have?
Through Mr. Kowalski.
I don't mean through Mr. Kowalski. I mean, talk to Bill Gray directly.
That's fine, I'll talk to him.
And then give me a call if you have any further concern.
But again, I think that this council needs to take action and not just an individual person.
I have two questions. Are the streetlights going in currently?
The streetlight bases and wiring is in place.
Okay.
There are 36 steel posts sitting on construction ground out there right now.
Okay. Do you know if the plan is to put the steel posts through all of the streets?
Yes.
Within Savannah Green, not just the main?
All of the streets will have, all of the primary streets, not counting the alleyways.
Yes.
The primary streets will have steel post lighting.
And, am I, I'm sorry, am I, am I forgetting something? I believe that we discussed this several weeks ago and, and talked about putting it on a committee agenda. Is that, is that not correct?
We talked about it. I don't recall it was being put on the, on the.
We were told that if we wanted to discuss it, this is the meeting to be at. We're here.
Well, that's.
And we want our voice.
We can put it on, on an agenda, and if you'd like to do that, Ms. Chenoweth, let's do that.
Yes.
And we can discuss that, sure.
I would ask if you're going to put it on an agenda, please notify the homeowners association out there. We'd be more than happy to come and talk with you about it.
You've got a number of homes out there.
It's about 150 currently in residence.
Yeah, okay.
There is a homeowners association being.
There is a homeowners association?
Yes, sir.
Can you leave that information with Ms. Clark, our city clerk?
Can do.
Please?
I can do that.
And talk to Mr. Gray and.
I will contact Mr. Gray in the morning.
Okay, nobody's, and there is not, it's not a blind eye. Don't think that, I mean, we are certainly paying attention.
Mr. Wayland?
Yes.
We go ahead and identify a date for that now, if you want, put it on the agenda two weeks from today.
Yes.
It'll be the committee meeting, so that they know right now when it would be on.
Put that on the next committee meeting.
And the date of that would be? August the 9th.
The 9th?
Yeah.
All right. I thank you for your time.
Mr. Law, Ms. Patton.
Wes?
I was just wondering, is August 9th soon enough to address this issue in terms of the timing of the installation of the lights?
Question for Mr. Gray.
Will lights already be installed by August? It sounds like they're already being installed right now. Is that correct?
I'm sorry. The light bulbs have not started going up, but the bases are in. All the bases have been sunk into the ground.
Well, let's, Mr. Gray speak.
Well, I don't know the contractor's schedule, but I know J.F. Edwards is the contractor doing the work, so.
That's correct.
If you're talking two more weeks, then obviously two more weeks of work will be forward, so.
Okay.
Is there any way that we can contact this, Mr. Edwards, the Edwards Company and?
Contract is with the developer. It's not with the city, so.
The contract between the people and the...
J.F. Edwards is working for the developer. Okay, constructs.
Constrains at Bloomington-Normal.
Okay, so.
Has a subsidiary of St. Agnes Homes.
A second, let us, can we contact them and see if we can to get some, a little slowdown on that information or how we can?
Certainly contact them, but I don't know if there's.
Any purpose?
No, I'm not saying that, but when you tell a contractor to stop work, there's costs involved with that.
Yeah.
So that's not an easy decision for developer to do, so.
Yes, Danielle.
Just based on previous, on precedent, in terms of issues like this, what might be helpful is for you, since you're the council member in that area, to call a meeting before next city council meeting, so prior to that city council meeting, which starts at 7:30, maybe a hearing, a conversation at 6:30, and invite staff and representatives and council members to be present at that.
I'm sure.
That way, you won't have to wait two weeks. It's just a friendly suggestion.
And then before the next council meeting?
Yes.
Which is Monday, next Monday.
Yes, mhm, in one week.
Now, well, how will that conflict with the development, the movement, removing the installation? Not going to stop anything, is it?
Without talking to him, I can't answer that tonight. I'd have to talk to them.
Well, certainly, that's an option if you want to have a meeting before the council meeting next week to discuss it from 6:30 to 7:30.
The question is, how efficacious would that be? Can we stop the development? Can we wait?
Well, those are questions I don't know. I mean, it's a, I don't know what standing we would have to stop the work.
Yeah.
You know, that would need some research. I have no idea if we have any standing or not.
I'll make phone calls tomorrow and find out, and I can let the mayor and... I'll make phone calls tomorrow and find out, and I can let the mayor and go, Mr. Whelan, and whenever I find out, I just have to make some calls.
Okay, well, if you could do that, Bill, that would help, and let the mayor know, and maybe if you can advise me, Mayor, is that all right? Advise me, and so maybe then we can propose a meeting before the next council meeting, which is next Monday, so that we can have a discussion, a public discussion. Ms. Pat?
If, I'm all for meeting as soon as is possible. But I can remind you, if you're planning on the meeting being in this room, town board meets on the first Monday of the month, which would be next week at 7:00 P.M. So, it would have to be before 7:00 P.M. or at a location other than here, and we, and most of us would not be able to, to be at, whatever the meeting is about, streetlights, but that might be something you want to do. But city council members, or also town board members, need to be here next Monday night at 7:00 P.M. for our town board meeting.
Yes, that's true, 7:00. Mayor, you...
Or you can make it 6:00, 6 to 7.
Yeah, we could have a meeting at 6:00 next Monday, and perhaps garner some information in the meantime that would give us a better handle on it, win, lose, or draw.
Well, and I think, you know, and it really goes back to, number one, if this company is advertising that this is what they're going to do, is the city of Urbana going to allow companies to come in here and advertise whatever they want, and then do whatever they want to do? And I think they're setting a precedence.
Like I said earlier, I can assure you that Mr. Gray has been on top of this, and they finally found us something that they could agree on, the city, and the ones that were proposed wouldn't, were not legal.
That's, I mean, that's, I understand your statements, Mr. Whelan, but I also understand that there are other types of ornamental streetlights this city has accepted.
Okay.
And to allow this to occur is an atrocity for the people that are living out there.
Okay, let's keep in close contact on this, okay?
I would be more than happy to. Are there any other questions of me?
No.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Yakov Ziso. Yakov?
I do not wish to speak.
No wish to speak?
No, thank you.
That's all right, forget it. It's a little Russian, I'm speaking to them.
He's Israeli.
Was this in support or in opposition?
Yes.
And which issue?
Is he in support or opposition, and in what issue?
Well, he's in, oh, thank you, in opposition to the at-large council representation. Thank you, Yakov. Lois Steinberg would like to speak in opposition.
I live at 306 West Nevada in Urbana. I've lived in my ward for 26 years. I have a business for seven years in Ward 2. I'm in opposition to this at-large representation. I think it's a regressive idea. I agree with a lot of the statements that the other people made. I especially agree with Cope Comston that we should really table this until after the elections, and perhaps after the next ward elections here. We already have an at-large member, the mayor, on our council, and I would be afraid that the moneyed interests would win out over the creative class interests. And I live in Urbana because it's more creative, and I like my little microcosm here. You know, in the bigger scheme of things, I'm not represented. Certainly, Tim Johnson doesn't represent me in this congressional district, my interests, and I really think it's regressive. So, I hope you table it, and there could be other creative ways to resolve problems in the ward, but not by being regressive and having two at-large members. I think this group is smart enough to come up with some better ideas.
Thank you, Ms. Steinberg. Any questions? Thank you. The next speaker is Matthew Murray, in opposition.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to address the council. I'll try to be really brief. I'm against the at-large referendum being put on. I'd like to see it tabled. I really have yet to hear a compelling reason for at-large representation. And in fact, I hadn't been aware of this until I came to the meeting, but everything I've heard, it sounds like there is actually a lot of growth and a lot of benefit going to the Ward 6 and to the wards that people were complaining aren't having their proper representation. So, that sort of strikes me as a red herring. I'm, I live at 606 East High Street. I've lived there for 10 years. I'm represented by Laura Huth. I'm, you know, I'm very satisfied with my ability to contact her personally. She, I know she holds open coffees. I can get ahold of her, I can give her my opinion. And I was aware that the mayor did not back her in her last election, which puzzled me quite a bit, being that you're both Democrats. I didn't understand that, that he put forth another candidate. And frankly, I would just rather see there be more cooperation between the mayor and people of the Democratic Party who are on the council. I think that would go a long way toward just addressing what people have already said are these really key issues that are confronting Urbana. And so, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Any questions? Thank you. Next to speak is Laura Haber, in opposition.
My name is Laura Haber. I live at 206 South McCullough, and I'd like to speak against the proposal. I had the pleasure of serving on the Urbana School Board for eight years, and I had the unique experience of running for my position under both an at-large system and a subdistrikting system. So I think I have a unique perspective to give on this issue. When I first ran at-large for school board, I was running as a student. And I've lived in Urbana now for 19 years. I was a student who decided to stay, so I would like to dispute the view that students don't have a stake in the community, or that they're, they're all transitory or don't have an interest in the community. I ran as a student, and I had to deal with that question all the time of whether I was actually legitimate, because I happened to be enrolled in the university. But I ran first as an at-large member of the school board, and then later, when we went to subdistrikting, I ran in my district. And I have my reservations about moving towards subdistrikting for a lot of the reasons that people have mentioned tonight. But what is striking is the change that happened in how I had to campaign for public office when the system changed from at-large to sub-district. And one of the big changes is that when I, when I was running in a sub-district, I was now representing a particular district, which was the North Side, predominantly African-American. When I had to run in a sub-district, all of a sudden, I had to knock on doors that I hadn't had to knock on before. I had to articulate a vision, and I had to answer questions for people that had not had anyone knock on their door in a long time. I had to, and when I ran at-large, I didn't have to knock on doors on the North Side. In fact, I don't think anyone had to knock on doors on the North Side. When we ran in at-large, we went where the votes were. We went where the easy votes are, where people are already voting, because that makes sense when you're running at-large. You have a limited amount of resources. You concentrate those resources where the votes are, where the, where the votes already are, not in getting people to register to vote, but where people are already registered to vote and already can reliably be counted on to come out and vote. So you're chasing after those same already motivated, already active voters. When I ran in subdistrikting, it was very different. I couldn't chase after those same voters. I had to chase after my constituents. I had to be accountable to those constituents, even if there weren't that many of them voting. And I wonder, you know, the argument that not many of them vote, how much more diluted is their voice when you, when they're outnumbered by the very well-mobilized people in other areas? That dilutes that voice even more. I agree with the argument that you then, we need to get people out to vote, we need to register voters, rather than diluting that voice. But I guess I want to point out that it's very, there is a difference in accountability. I felt that difference. I saw that difference, simply in campaigning, but also when you're listening to constituents. And I don't think anyone can argue that in at-large, you would necessarily be accountable to the same minority populations, the same populations that are less mobilized and that don't currently have a voice. So what you would have is people who are going after the already powerful interests being added to the, to the city council. I don't see how you can argue that that would happen any differently than that. Even though I've been on the school board, I still get nervous talking to city council. I think city council people get nervous when they talk to the school board. There's something about being on people's turf. So, I mean, so I think there's the accountability issue. I think it's also interesting that when we moved from at-large to sub-districts, the argument was we needed to do this to lessen the influence of the Lille neighborhoods. And now we want to move to at-large to lessen the influence of the Lille neighborhoods. It's kind of funny. I mean, maybe people should be more mobilized to lessen that interest, get more other people out to vote, if they want less influence of the Lille neighborhoods. Also, we should note that the vast majority of voters supported going to subdistrikting in the school district, and I wonder why the city council should, would be any different. So if we, so you're going against the grain of Urbana voting. The trend, and I think you're going against the grain of, larger grain, because I think the trend is more direct democracy rather than less. I think also that a lot of this, a lot of the arguments that have to do with people not liking a particular map, a form of government tends to last longer than a map based on the census. And so I think it's a very serious matter to change a form of government because you don't like a particular map that was drawn. I think the answer would be to look at, you know, what can be done, either to change your representatives, or to change a map, or to change the process of drawing the map, rather than changing this form of government. And again, the timing does seem suspect, and I don't want there to be any, any veil of suspicion on what the city council does in terms of motivations. And so, I would hope that decisions are made in other, based on other motivations besides not liking particular decisions. So, I guess I'd just like to conclude. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions? No? Oh, yes, Mr. Otto.
I have a couple of questions. Was, when the school board was at-large, was it a completely at-large system? So, everybody was elected at-large?
It was completely at-large.
Okay, so it wasn't a hybrid, where you had some people, maybe the majority of people who were, and two people who were at-large, but everybody was elected at-large?
Right. So what was happening for all of us would only happen for two people in this system.
Okay. I have another question. The boundaries of the school district are actually larger than Urbana and have a higher population. Is that right?
Yes.
It includes all of Urbana, but it also includes Urbana.
Plus rural areas.
Like a better word, suburbs.
Right.
Right, okay. How much did you spend when you ran as an at-large candidate, if I can be so bold?
Actually, I think the spending issue wasn't an issue in terms of making it cheaper to run by sub-district as opposed to at-large. And I think the reason that the spending wasn't an issue is that there are so few people who vote in school board races, that when you're running at-large, you don't have to chase every single voter. You only have to chase mobilized voters. You only have to chase voters who vote in school board elections. And so, so it's actually not that expensive to run a school board race at-large.
Okay. But I'm just trying to get a sense of the order of magnitude. Was it more than 10,000?
No.
More than 5,000?
No, because people weren't campaigning for at-large school board. It's very different, I think, than city council in that way, because there aren't that many voters to chase after.
Was it, was it more than 1,000?
That I spent?
Yeah.
Possibly.
Okay.
It's hard, it was almost 10 years ago, so...
The other charge that has been made is that if we have at-large elections, it will, I don't know, that it's a scheme by the conservative and moneyed power to put people on city council who are their allies. You weren't part of the conservative and moneyed power when you ran at-large, were you?
Again, I think it's, that in that, in that case, school board was a little different because there are so few people who vote. It tends to be, you know, of a small number of parents and concerned citizens who actually vote in school board elections. They don't, they didn't take, you know, they don't take place at the same time, and they're, you know, it's just, you know, it's not, it's a really extremely small number of people. So, the money aspect isn't an issue for school board, but it is in champagne. I mean, look at champagne. They spend a lot of money on their election.
Thank you.
I just, briefly, where did you find that you were, the people who ran at-large were more conservative? Just briefly, yes or no? That's all.
Hard to say. I mean, there's been a shakeup on this since the subdistrikting. It's hard to say. Again, I mean, if you look at champagne with their system, it's extremely expensive to run in champagne for school board.
That wasn't the question, but thank you very much for saying that. Next is Paul Kennedy, and finally, last to speak in opposition. Paul Kennedy?
I actually didn't want to say his name.
Okay, he doesn't want to address the committee. Very well, that is the end of the list of people who will speak to us. Thank you very much. Oh, yes, Mr. Wakeland. Pardon me?
Could I make a few comments?
I beg your pardon?
Could I make a few comments?
Did you fill out a...
No, I did not.
Well, that's the, that's the procedure, the protocol.
You haven't thought of a form and...
If you'd like to, please do, Mr. Wakeland. It's just that we have your name then on, you know, as, I don't think anybody recognizes you here.
They recognize me. I know you didn't believe, won't believe it, but I did not plan to say anything tonight, but I've sat here and listened. I think you need to listen carefully. The people who came, came because they're concerned. The people who came weren't playing games with governmental models, or which works best, or which works worst. They were trying to express to you a concern. They do not feel they were well-represented now, regardless of the arguments that you may put forth. As the leading, one of the leading speakers said, regardless of what you do tonight, this is going to be on the November ballot. And I was not one of the instigators in this thing. They asked me, would I come along? Sure, I'm going to come along. Blair Park last Wednesday night, I had three petition sheets with 15 lines on each sheet. I could get 45 signatures. I had, I would estimate, five people who signed it that I knew. I was at a concert. I contacted 46 people to sign the petition to put this on the November ballot. One denied signature. Forty-five agreed. There is concern out there, and it will be on the November ballot if the petition, the petition process will do it. I asked one quick question. Who do the students belong to? Students belong to Urbana. Now, I don't know the legal ramifications, and I don't know if it's possible, but you take all the students, and you divide them up among all the districts that you have voting. You solve your problem. The power structure in Urbana has been such that the West Side has controlled this city for well over 50 years. And there are many in the Central and East Side who see that day ending one way or another. Maybe, maybe it may take another 10 years. Even tonight, I didn't, I wasn't able to keep count, but virtually all the people who were opposed to this were east of Vine Street, or maybe east of Race Street. I couldn't quite keep track of it, but the vast majority who were against it were from the West Side. This should tell you something. This city...
Council members, please take your seats. Gender?
You have a really responsive...
Council members, please take your seats. Mr. Otto! Somebody get his- Next item on the agenda is item five, an ordinance number 2004-07-087, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a second cooperative agreement, that is, the Urbana Free Library Expansion. We have Mr. Waller here.
I'll go ahead and kick it off.
Thank you.
This is a second library agreement, and it was prompted by new work to be done in the Urbana Free Library Expansion. The foundation had expressed an interest in having new work done in the amount of about Some of the highlights of the work would be to demolish the Winkelman Building, which is right in front of the new entrance of the library, and then to move the function that was planned for the Winkelman Building into the Tepper Building, which is directly west of the library. And so that work, and then do the site work where the Winkelman Building was for landscaping and parking in that area. So this is an agreement that details not only the work to be done, but the foundation's contribution to pay for the work. It also envisions a contribution from the foundation in the amount of $75,000 that the city would put to the purchase of the Morrow Building. And the reason for that is that the Tepper Building, the plan for the Tepper Building had been to, for the city to use it as income property to pay off the purchase price when we bought it a few years ago. Since we would be dedicating the Tepper Building for use of the library, the idea then would be to have use of the Morrow Building for income property for the next several years to be able to pay off that investment. An important part of the cooperative agreement is master plan for the Urbana Free Library Block. So the master plan has been discussed and adopted by the foundation and the library board based on long-range planning activities that both had adopted over a period of several years. So that master plan is incorporated as Exhibit B in the cooperative agreement, and it's envisioned that as development progresses in the library block over the next several years, that it be done in a manner consistent with that master plan. And we have a number of members of the Library Foundation Board and Library Board here. Rupert Evans is the chair of the foundation, Charlie Smythe from the library board, Judge Jensen is part of the foundation board as well, of course Fred Schliff is here, and Jack Waller is one of the authors of the agreement. We'll walk through the agreement, and then we'll hear from Library Foundation and board members.
Todd, you didn't leave much more to say. You summarized it rather well, but let me quickly go through it page by page. The first page are some whereas clauses, which merely recite the prior agreement that existed and the pledge of the parties to continue to cooperate with one another, to continue to expand on the library expansion project and how to fund it. Page two starts to get into the gist of the matter, and that is describes the general intention of the three parties to demolish Winkelman Building, create parking space there, transfer the Tepper Building to the library for its use as library purposes, and to acquire the Morrow Building. On the top of page three, the ownership clause merely says that if there is a transfer of the Tepper Building to the library, that the library will acquire the title in the same manner that they hold their other property. Part of the details of the agreement start on the bottom of page three, and that recites the assistance that the foundation is going to give in accomplishing these matters. As the mayor said, the assistance should amount to something like $241,000. That figure comes from the calculation and estimate of the architects to accomplish the remodeling that's necessary for the Tepper Building and the demolition and paving of the Winkelman Building lot. The agreement provides that they would pay $120,000, basically, at the time that we transferred to them the Tepper Building, and the remainder of the $241,000 would be transferred to the city upon completion of the work called for in a change order. Again, as the mayor mentioned, they would contribute $75,000 of city for the city to buy the Morrow Building. And, oh, by the way, the Tepper Building, even though it be transferred to the library, the city would continue to retire the existing mortgage on the Tepper Building, which, as the mayor said, was one of the reasons we wanted the Morrow Building, to hopefully get some income that would help pay for the mortgage on the Tepper Building. Going on then, let's see, an important part of the agreement starts on the top of page five, where the city's rights to use the Morrow Building are more detailed. Basically, the agreement envisages that the city can use the Morrow Building for any purpose that's not inconsistent with, shall we say, the master plan of the library, considering that the main library is on the same block and it shouldn't be used for any purpose that would be inconsistent with the fact that the main library is right there in the same block. The city would have the right to continue to occupy the Morrow Building, presumably to rent it to somebody, until at least year 2017, because if you see in paragraph 6B on page five, that everyone agrees that the city will not be given any notice to yield up possession of the Morrow Building less than, sooner than January 1st of 2015, and even then, they have to give us a two-year notice, as I recall. So that would give us continued occupancy of the Morrow Building until 2017. Provided, however, and I'd like you to notice the last, the second paragraph of 6B on page five, the library can demand early possession of the Morrow Building, but then they have to pay us a, I'll call it a penalty, and those are set forth in Schedule C. The sooner they would want it, the more money they'd have to pay the city for us to get That is basically what the agreement provides, and a lot of the rest of it is what I'll call boilerplate and typical language that you find in almost any legal agreement. I'd be glad to answer any questions about any details on this agreement, if you want, but that really outlines the basics of how it operates.
Yes, Daniel.
I have a question. I noticed in, I believe it's the last whereas, it states, whereas the parties have agreed on a master plan for the use of the library block. Does this council have on record a vote in support of the master plan, or is the idea that we would be kind of agreeing to the master plan at the same time that we are making this second cooperative agreement?
Unilaterally.
Okay. And then my second question-
Do you have a master plan for you?
Yes, yes, and we've had it for a number of weeks, actually. The mayor made that available several weeks ago, although the agreement itself was not made available to us until Friday. The-
It passed out at last week's meeting, and-
The entire agreement?
Yeah.
The cooperative, oh, okay. I was looking at the online version, okay, that I just saw the master agreement. My second question is, what's, I'm trying to understand the motivation behind the top of page six. I believe it's pretty much in that first paragraph, the last sentence in that first paragraph. It states, "Changes of the master plan which is attached shall be only made if approved by all three entities." And then it says, "That being said, however, the city may amend the master plan unilaterally insofar as the site currently occupied by the Morrow Building or the site currently occupied by the Alder Building, so as to allow a change from parking to a park-like development allowing substantially all of the view of the library from Race Street to Green Street." I mostly want to understand that statement. I'm not sure if I get it. Does that mean that the, at any point, the city can demolish those two buildings and allow the view of the library to be seen? Or does that mean that if it's parking, they've already been demolished, they can be made into park-like settings, green settings, by the city without there being a master plan change? Or neither?
Well, I'll share an answer with Rupert on this, but to me, it clearly means that rather than having a sea of asphalt parking, we can instead have, you know, green space and beautify it that way. This doesn't promise an asphalt, a sea of asphalt.
Okay. So does this mean that the city may unilaterally demolish those buildings without a revisitation of the master plan?
Yes.
Okay.
If I could add to that, I think the idea is that anything done along those lines of making it green space would be consistent with the master plan. And so this just sort of extends the language so that it allows the city a little more leeway to act earlier, should they want to develop more green space, for example, because that is consistent with the master plan, which is just to basically have the entire block be a park-like city property devoted to the library.
Okay. So it would be consistent with the master plan as written for the city without coming back to the entities to demolish those buildings and either make parking or park space?
Yes.
Okay.
But if you wanted to use it for something else, then the master plan calls for the three parties to agree on what that use is.
I see. I have two, a couple of questions. Would you agree with these following statements? One is, and this is, these are proposed wherashes that I will be making later, and I did try to get a copy of this to the UFL@advance.net or whatever the address is, the foundation address, but I don't know if you received them.
Are you talking about this second, second agreement?
No, I'm wondering if you got some notes from me regarding changes that I'll be making this evening.
Indeed.
Okay. The, one is, is it your desire, do you believe that's the desire of the foundation to develop the library with overall visions for downtown, including the downtown strategic plan, the comprehensive plan, and the annual action plan?
Yes.
Okay. And second, do you-
I think it shows that in the master plan.
It does at the top. It refers to the annual action plan. That's correct. The second is, do you believe that it's within the foundation's best interest to provide goods and services to library patrons within convenient walking distance from the library, as well as to harness the economic development opportunities of our highly popular library while fostering library-compatible uses on the block?
Yes, I think so.
And then the last is, do you believe that it's in the foundation's interest to preserve and enhance properties of historical significance, including the Figes Building and the library?
Yes.
Okay. That's all my questions are.
It would help if we had something in writing. Well, that is in the second master-
Yeah, that's what she's proposing.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Pat.
Could you just explain a little bit what your vision is for the south side of Green Street? I was surprised to see it referenced in the master plan. And I know we're talking about a long way in the future, but what is that about?
Well, in our discussions about it, we were aware of the interest in planning so that we have compatibility between public uses and private uses, so that the two would tend to complement each other. And so we were suggesting in this master plan that the planning extend beyond the library block to take a look at the possibility of commercial development along the south side of Green Street and along the west side of Cedar, because we think that would enhance the library's development and it simultaneously provide a beautiful park-like setting around which commercial development could occur.
So the long-term vision that you have with this master plan is not for the library or the city and the library together to acquire land on the south side of Green Street or the west side of Cedar for library-related use? No. You're more talking about, well, Charlie, go ahead.
I was just going to say, if you read the very first sentence in paragraph seven of the master plan, it's "in accordance with the downtown master plan in the Green Street MOR District." I mean, that's the preface there, and it's basically just sort of feeding in to the entire downtown development, redevelopment efforts, and basically encouraging a vision of including the library and the entire space that the library may eventually occupy into the long-term planning of the entire downtown.
I see.
I think that goes along with what Ms. Chenoweth has added to this in her whereas clause, which is to integrate the future library development into the overall vision. I think that's a very good whereas to put in the agreement.
It says really more direction to the city then than it is talking about an activity of the library or the library foundation.
Yes, absolutely.
I see. Thank you.
Any further questions? I would like to ask one. Mr. Evans, this plaza, will it be used for parking at all?
Yes. The, you have this drawing in front of you. The south side of the plaza has spaces for, I think it's nine parking spaces. But we are designing it so that if we want to use the entire plaza for some function, not necessarily a library function, it could be a civic function of some sort, then we could put some traffic cones here, which would shut this off from parking and make it available then as a fairly sizable plaza.
Sure.
And I think a beautiful one with a good view of the south side of the library.
Would there be parking allowed though throughout the plaza?
There's a, something to be worked out on this. The original architect's plan showed a curb going right through the middle of the plaza so that people couldn't drive in to the north half of the plaza. But some of us were afraid that that would be a hazard if we had a public function in the plaza, and so we're-
Yeah, access, you mean, for emergency vehicles?
Yeah, that's the curb.
Yeah, I see.
It's a structure that would be, the architect's home, it's perfectly done, it still has some planters or whatever.
So it would be more of garden rather than a parking area?
Yeah.
Do we have a parking problem there?
Well, I think, Mr. Wallen, the idea is to have it be more of a multi-use, so that you don't have such a great separation as that drawing shows there, where there's parking on the south and a plaza on the north, that there, what they're saying is the curb would be eliminated, so that if there was a public event that would envision the use of those parking spaces, that could happen, and you enlarge the size of the plaza. But then during most of the hours, you would have some other kind of a barricade there, an ornamental barricade with planters, or, you know, a decorative barricade of some sort to separate the vehicular traffic from the pedestrian traffic.
There's another purpose to the- There's another purpose to the plaza, and that is to serve as a place where we can place named bricks. We're beginning a, a sales campaign, uh, on behalf of the foundation to get laser engraved bricks, which we will sell in order to make money to add to the, in, in support of the library.
I see. The question, though, that I, I asked was, do you see a problem with, uh, limited parking?
You mean, in the entire-
In that block?
In the entire block, yes, indeed, there is. And I'm not a, I'm not a parking expert, but, uh, I think we're going to be approaching this and have to make some decisions sometime about, uh, the extent to which we want to encourage parking there versus the use of the library block for public art and for, for open, uh, green space. I think that's the sort of thing that we ought to be discussing as we, as we see the library coming into full use. Remember, it's, it's only in partial use now because the-
I understand.
-half of the library is, is under construction.
When would you want to discuss this with, and with who? I mean, the idea, it seems to me, the idea, the question of parking is a substantial one.
Yes.
And while, uh, the art, the value of art displays is certainly something that Urbana could flourish with, um, is there, how do you plan to-
Well, the master plan envisions, uh, discussions between the library board, the foundation, and the, and the council, and, and working out some sort of mutually acceptable development.
Well, if I might, um, the, the presentation was going to include a, um, presentation of the master plan by, um, Mr. Evans and, and Mr. Smythe, and I know that when we've got questions about the agreement, they, you know, naturally flow over to the master plan, so it might be instructive to hear from them as they present the master plan, and that might answer some of our questions.
Okay, well, that mean, at that time, if these decisions have been made?
Well, I think, I think if they'll go ahead and present the master plan, then, then we can ask questions about that after they're done.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, the master plan really starts out reciting what it is we're trying to do with the block. And that's in the first two paragraphs. I, I take it you all have copies?
Yes.
And then it goes into a background which essentially points out that the three parties involved in this proposed agreement have in the past always seen the library block as an entity. And while we haven't had a master plan written out, it looked like this was a good time to get one written out. And so, the, uh, the foundation and the library board worked together to develop this plan, and it has been formally adopted by both of those groups. And it addresses each of the properties on the block, going through the library property, Winkelman, Tepper, Figes, Morrow, and Alder. Those are the properties on the block. I think I'll just stop there and, and ask Charlie if he has things he would like to add, and, and certainly ask you to ask questions.
I guess adding one, one point to this is that the, the, the library, since 1989 and its planning for building, has had a comprehensive plan that has included a master plan as part of its process. So, what we've done here is simply formalized that plan, sort of separated it out from the whole library planning as a separate document that we could bring to both the foundation and to the, and to the council, because it was, uh, it's sort of a component to the, to the, to the agreement. So, it was sort of necessary to, to, to separate it out from the rest of the, of library planning. Uh, I think it recognizes, uh, um, you know, as I stated earlier, we're trying to integrate it with the downtown planning, with the mixed-office residential planning, but, you know, this, this block sits right between the two. Uh, and, and at the same time, also recognizing historical significance for the area. Uh, the, the, there are, there are two properties, the Alder Building and the, the Figes Building, or Figes Property, that are, that are, that are part of that block, that are currently in use. Uh, the owner, Mrs. Figes, is, is, has not to be bothered, really, with respect to her property, that's something we've, we've honored. Uh, but it should be pointed out that that house has been moved before. Uh, it was actually moved for, it used to be, it used to face south onto Green Street, and it was moved facing west to make space for the, for what was a construction of a gas station, a filling station, uh, the Morrow Building. And so, we know it is a building that-
It was moved.
We, we do know it is a building that can be moved, um, uh, safely, uh, from-
[laughing]
So, should, should it come to be? I, actually, you know, it's interesting, you know, it, it, as we discussed the master plan, uh, the Alder Property is not necessary for, for, you know, sort of the, the whole block, you know, it can exist in and of itself. Uh, we gained parking by, by, through the demolition of the Winkelman Building. We gained like nine to 10 spaces with that. Uh, and just taking out the curb just simply makes that space usable in more, more variations, you know, trying to add to, to potential downtown uses. I can see it being used, uh, in, in, uh, the Corn Festival and, and some other, you know, music venues would be very nice there. For example, uh, just move the planters and, and move the planters so that they basically block the, the entrance to the cars, you know, so you've got the planters going one way, uh, during most of the season, you move the planters around and you can block cars from moving in, and you create your plaza. So, it's, it's basically trying to create a, a multi-use space. Uh, so, so the, the library block as a whole, you know, whatever happens to the Alder Building, that, it's sort of independent of that, you can, you can do a lot of things without the Alder Building. I'm more concerned that 20 years down the road, if the library decides to expand to the west, which it is designed to do easily, uh, because of the removable wall at the, at the west end, uh, at that point, you build that building out, and if you wanted to make it bigger than the current, um, dimensions, uh, that it current, that it, you just stretch it out in its natural way, you're basically limited, that's all you could, you, you can't bring it around, you couldn't add a little bit, uh, you know, one thing I envisioned and shared this with others is, is that you could have some small, retail space at the outer edge of the, of the west end of the library. Suppose you wanted to put in a coffee house or whatever, they need, uh, they, they would need access outside of business hours, for example, of the library, uh, to, to be a viable business. Uh, and you wouldn't, you know, necessarily have all the space that you want, um, without possibly moving the Figes House. Uh, the other thing, too, is even, even if you just move, build the library straight out as you, as you, as it naturally, uh, would occur, um, it would have a negative impact on the Figes House, because it would be up very close to it. And so, uh, if you want to, you know, so, so whatever's done with the library has to take into account the Figes House. Uh, you know, if the library expands to the west, it's going to impact the Figes House no matter what. Uh, and, uh, it is a nice piece of property, it's been there for 150 years, uh, either one direction or the other, and something should be done to, to, uh, make sure that it continues to be part of the city.
But the master plan says we're not going to do anything with the Figes Building unless we have agreement among the council, the foundation, and the library board.
And the owner of the Figes Property.
Well, uh, the original question I asked was if we're anticipating growth in the library, which we are-
Yes.
And we're, and we're not going to, are we going to accommodate that with car, with parking for cars? And that's the question of that plaza.
Well, I personally think we, we will, but again, that has to be, if you adopt this master plan, uh, that the other two bodies have adopted, then we won't do it unless we all agree on it.
Okay, so, uh, the question then is when, when do we have a chance to do that as a council?
Whenever.
Okay, the mayor will certainly see that that's made available or made-
So, do what, approve the master plan?
Approve the master plan with regard to this, the parking, uh, in this area, in this plaza.
Well, that's what's on the table now, in part, because this master plan is exhibit B of the agreement that's before you right now.
Okay. Esther?
Yes, so, my understanding is if we were, if we approve the agreement, we've approved the master plan, right? Yeah, okay, so that's, that's what being asked to do.
Now, we're asking for them to be considered together, and they were adopted together by the, the other two bodies.
Can I, I have a question. If we were to delay, I have an interest in getting public input on the master plan. If, would, would it be your preference that we delay action on the entire agreement until that were to happen, or would you be, um, or would it be more helpful to the library and the library foundation if we were to approve the agreement without approving the master plan?
I don't think that the, the agreement amounts to a hill of beans unless you also have a master plan with it.
Okay, is, is there any reason that, um, are there, is there any issue of timeliness with regard to getting this agreement as far as, you know, concerns with regard to the Tepper and the Morrow Buildings? I mean, this, if, if we did this, if we did this in six to eight weeks from now, would that be a problem, would that pose any kind of problem for the library or the library foundation? That's Fred.
Well, there is this problem that, uh, the agreement that the mayor has signed with regard to the Morrow, uh, property, not building, the Morrow Property, uh, calls for closure on that.
Well, it calls for closure, uh, for a closing date of August 31st. Actually, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Morrow today, and he's requesting additional time. He's had family considerations that have not allowed him to, uh, get all of his possessions out of the building, and he doesn't anticipate being able to do that by the end of next month. So, he's requested an additional month. Um, I told him I didn't think that there was any problem with doing that, particularly since he is allowing currently the library to use, uh, a part of the building for storage at the library's request. So, that's been a cooperative agreement between, uh, Mr. Morrow and the library, which, you know, I don't think, you know, a month or two here or there will change.
There are really two major parts to the, the second cooperative agreement. Let me remind you that we had a first cooperative agreement, which called for the foundation to, uh, provide certain funds to aid the city in the construction of the library. And we have paid that, and, uh, I got to hold on to the $2 million check for about 30 seconds before it went to Todd. The second agreement calls for going beyond that $2 million. It calls for the, the foundation to aid the library, which is its sole reason for existence, to aid the library in, um, the demolishing of the Winkelman Building and the remodeling of Tepper and furnishing the Tepper Building to considerable extent, so that it will take care of the, the needs of the library. Now, that calls for, the second agreement calls for the foundation to pay 241 odd thousand dollars, plus $75,000 to, for the Tepper Building. Uh, I cannot recommend to the, the foundation that they pay this money without an agreement as to what's going to be done with it. And if, if you folks want to, um, have a public hearing on this, that's fine with me. And, uh, we'll just delay this until, uh, you're ready to act, but, uh, we're not going to spend any money on it without an agreement.
Yeah, that's, um, you know, the work is being done. You know, the Tepper Building, I think, is virtually ready to go. I, I think, um, and Fred probably knows that whether, uh, it's been, starting to be occupied or not, but I think it's virtually ready to go. And so, the only downside is, as Rupert says, he's not going to recommend to the foundation that any of the money be paid for the work that's going on right now, until we have an agreement.
But the work can continue?
Well, the work is continuing, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think it's, uh, important that, uh, all of this get flushed out and, and get good public input on it. I mean, I, I think that's, uh, an important part of this. I don't think that as long as, as the city's floating the money for, for, for taking care of the Tepper Building, um, a month or two delay on this is not going to have, uh, an impact on the overall product, uh, project. Uh, and, uh, I think it's more important to go, you know, what we're trying to do is set up something 20 years down the road here also. You know, in, our immediate need is to be able to move into the Tepper Building and tear down the Winkelman Building and start working on the plaza. That's, that's this next year, you know, that's, that's this next month, actually. And so, and I, as long as, as long as the city is, is floating that along, uh, that, that doesn't have any real impact on what's, what we're talking about here, which is actually something that's 20, 25 years down the road. And, you know, getting back to, to Mr. Whelan's issue on, on parking, you know, we gained some parking with the plaza, with the, with the demolition of the Winkelman Building. Long-term, if you expand the, 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 the building even more, parking protections are going to be part of, of the overall thinking 20 years or 25 years down the road. And so, uh, what we're really trying to do is put something to get better on paper here going into this than existed in 1989 or 1972 when, when the other, uh, expansions were done on the building, so.
Good. What do you expect from us tonight?
I'd love to have you approve the-
Master Plan.
Both documents, but that's, that's entirely in your hands.
Uh, Mayor, what do you think? Excuse me, Daniel, did you, you want us to make something?
I guess I, I just want to explain the piece of paper that's on council member's desk. I, uh, in looking through this and anticipating that we may vote on this tonight, um, I offer up some changes, um, and, and did feel to some degree like, uh, the, perhaps the foundation hasn't gotten an, an opportunity to respond to this, although this is a committee meeting, and if we do pass it, I'd be certainly interested in your input over the next week. Um, the, um, so, what I thought that in coming into this meeting we might do is to actually carve off the agreement, which I thought was kind of an immediate necessity because of the Morrow Property, um, from the master plan, and be able to hold a public hearing. If, if it is desired by the foundation that we hold off on both at this point, and we consider them together, I certainly would respect that, um, that desire. I would then just leave with, uh, committee members tonight and with the foundation. I believe, Todd, did you get them a copy? Is that what I saw? Do they have a copy?
Yeah, I gave them a copy.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Todd made a copy just a few minutes ago.
Great, thank you. Um, that, uh, some changes have been made, I, I'm offering some changes to the agreement, and of course, as this goes on, others may also have changes. And specifically, so I can explain it now, and then folks who want to have input, you know, in this discussion, we could, we could continue the discussion, is, um, one, two, instead of, the, in the fourth whereas where it explains that, you know, we will add additional parking and we will remove distractions from, from view, instead, the idea, I think, is, is that we need to provide adequate parking. And, um, when I think about downtown and parking, I don't think about block by block, do we have enough parking? I think downtown, do we have enough parking? The library is a half a block away from a deck, that deck is oftentimes full, so there is an issue there, um, but it is an expandable deck, and so perhaps we should be looking at parking solutions in that entire area. Um, there's the future of Lincoln Square Mall, there's the future of, uh, Jimmer's, which has gone through several name changes, I can't keep up with it. So, you know, I, I, instead of just stating, we're going to build additional parking on this block, I think-
Where did we say that?
Um, whereas, uh, we want to further improve the expansion concept by adding additional parking. I just offered the change that we would provide adequate parking and, um, figure out how to do that, and there may be some times when that's across the street. Second- I just offered the change that we would provide adequate parking and figure out how to do that, and there may be some times when that's across the street. Second would be improving the usability and visibility, so instead of necessarily saying we will move obstructions, I think the desire is to improve people's ability to use the library, get access to it, see it, the vista of the library as you approach it, et cetera. The fifth whereas, and I guess I'm offering three suggestions for whereses. One would be to integrate the future library development with the overall visions for downtown. I certainly know that that's your intention, and, but I wanted to make that clear upfront. Second is to think about providing goods and services to library patrons with inconvenient walking distance. And I think we, we need to be thinking about not only people going to the library, getting their books, and walking away from the library, which they do en masse, especially on Sunday afternoons when the place is completely shoulder-to-shoulder, but, but that we think about what it is that people need, and how can they reduce the number of trips that they're taking in a given day, and kind of combine trips, the library with, you know, their bread buying with their groceries or whatever it may be. And, and the fact that the library is an economic development engine for our downtown, and is probably one of the greatest ones that we have in our downtown, is there is more foot traffic and more car traffic, and every, the place is jammed oftentimes. I go by the library at least three or four times a day because of where I work, and it's, it's very clear that it is a huge draw to our downtown. So we need to be thinking about overall planning, how is it that we can take advantage of that? And as well as providing the goods and services people need, and providing a kind of convenience. The last whereas is just acknowledging the historical significance of, of some of the buildings on the property, and to do that within. I have in this, I have struck out, the parties have agreed to the master plan, because I thought that perhaps we would wait and have a public hearing, but we could include that after a public hearing. And then on the second page of my changes, I, I think, I misunderstood the final statement, the city may amend the master plan unilaterally, and I struck it in this proposal. I would, I think I would not strike it in the final proposal now that I understand that sentence. And then lastly, just to make it clear that I think that there's a lot of, a lot of good that could come from a public hearing on the master plan. I think the library is very near and dear to the hearts of the citizens of this, the residents of this community, and I think that they would be very much inclined to want to have some input on the, the long-term vision, just as they have had input on the long-term vision of other neighborhoods and areas in our community via the comprehensive plan. So I would strongly recommend going in that direction. And I guess I will hear from other committee members, but I would like to eventually, I guess, make the motion that we, that we hold a public hearing, but I will hold off on that for the moment.
Any other comments? Ms. Pat?
Given the hour, why don't you go ahead and make your motion?
Okay. I move that we have, that we postpone consideration on the cooperative agreement at this point until after a public hearing on the master plan. I propose that city staff look at calendars and make a recommendation for when the public hearing could be held on the master plan for the Urbana Free Library.
Second.
Okay, now does this, are you including the foundation and the library board as well as the city council?
Oh, absolutely. It's a public hearing, so everyone is invited, including the foundation and the park, I mean, the board.
Mayor, what about timing?
Well, I would, we can get it together at much notice, it just depends on when, what timeframe you want to have it. Do you want to have it middle of next month, late next month? You know, anytime, you know, we can get it done next week if you want to.
Ms. Pat?
Well, next week wouldn't accomplish the purpose. My concern about having a public hearing is that this is, we're talking about the whole block and 20-plus year vision, and I don't want to hear from, well, it's not that I want to hear from people. I know that if we just do this, or do this tonight or next week, and people didn't know about it, that in the months to come, we're going to hear complaints that we did something big like this, approved a master plan, and without any public input. So I, but I don't think there's any reason to put way off, just given a lot of people do go on vacation in August. If there isn't a, if this isn't going to hold up anything or hurt the library in any way, if we could do this the end of August or early September, and with a little bit of, some kind of public notice in advance, so people know about it, that would be, I think that would be best.
Mayor, did you want to say?
Well, it's no problem to do that. We can do it, you know, the week after Labor Day or something like that, you know? Everyone's going to be back for that time.
I'd be happy to see this master plan in the newspaper and on TV.
Good idea, yeah.
Too.
It'd be wonderful to have it discussed.
Yeah, and anytime we have a, a public hearing, of course, it's going to be noticed to-
One thing-
Well, I really meant, what we were talking about, if we could get, like, a story in the paper and pictures of like that. I think, then people feel, and there's still people who miss it and will complain, but, but people will have been involved, and, and there are people who are interested in this, who'll have a chance to speak. Excuse me, thank you.
Ms. Wu?
I just wanted to note, since we've made mention of the block to the west and the block to the south, that we could pay particular attention to making sure that the property owners on those blocks receive notice of the meeting. There was some clarification, I had some concerns about that number seven in the master plan, which were appeased some tonight, but I still think it would be important to make sure that those property owners-
Well, I think this fits in beautifully with Ms. Chenoweth's suggestion about having goods and, and services available to the library patrons. It would just be a, a natural draw.
Well, we can use the same process we do for, you know, zoning matters, notify property owners within 250 feet of the library, and, you know, put up the yellow signs and saying there's going to be a public hearing, you know, and the time and place of it.
Good. The time to be decided, it's probably September, after Labor Day?
Yeah, we'll do it after Labor Day, then we'll get the notices up plenty of times so people are aware of it.
Okay, yes, Charlie.
If I could add one thing, if, if, if you are interested in changing the, the four whereses, as, as Ms. Chenoweth has indicated, that's something we can take back now and get done, you know, for approval by, by the library board and the foundation. So if you are interested in that language as a group to be included, that's something we can get started with now. The other thing I was going to add is that, one of the things that we didn't have time for, and part of it is, I believe, the artist who, who's helped do this before, is draw a bigger picture with the change in the, in the plan here. You know, we just got this black and white sketch, now it'd be nice to have a little time to, to expand that and add some color. And so having some time would, would work on that as well.
Yes, Ms. Chenoweth.
I would like to call a sense of the council vote on whether to request that the library foundation bring back the whereses as written in my, the thing that I sent out to, to committee members, excluding the striking of that last sentence, because, so whereas the parties have agreed to the master plan, but including the three whereses and changing the fourth whereas as in the, in the document.
By adding additional parking?
Yeah, so basically, everything as, as written in the document that I passed out, including the final whereas, which is struck.
Okay. And fourth, then the fourth, you, you are taking out library by the addition and leaving in the expansion concept by adding additional parking?
No, it would be striking that phrase and adding the phrase in bold, library by providing adequate parking, improving the usability and visibility. I want to get a sense of the council of whether or not that is a supportable language to take back to the foundation, for the foundation to take back to.
Yes, Ms. Pat?
Probably the most efficient way to do that would be to amend your motion to include that language, and then we'll vote.
Okay.
Or if you, if you don't want to waste time, do it, just ask, does anybody not want to do that, and if anybody doesn't want to, then they-
Does anyone have any objections to my, including the language as written out in the motion that I've made?
The only part of that, that I think there might be any kind of, that might need some clarification, is the last whereas that you're suggesting, and that's, so whereas the party's desire to preserve and enhance properties of historical significance, including the Figes Building and the library. That's very general language, and so, and I know that there may be a difference in what you mean by that and what the foundation board and the library board mean by that. And so I don't know if you necessarily left it vague as, so as that that concept would be embraced, and then you can deal with the particulars and the details in the master plan, and the master plan, as it changes from time to time, or if you want to be more specific on what does it mean to preserve and enhance properties of historical significance, especially the Figes Building.
I was thinking the former. And I'd be, and in some ways, this is a, is an invitation to hear back from the foundation as to, so the language as written currently.
Yeah, I just didn't want there to be any misunderstanding between the council and the foundation board and library board as to what that particular whereas clause means, because it could well mean different things to different groups.
Yes, to respond, I think of preserving and enhancing properties of historical significance, there's a lot of different ways of doing that. It, I did not mean to say the Figes Building must stay on that block at its current location and configuration forever. So what I, what I wanted is an understanding that we are going to preserve and enhance properties of historical significance, and that we, there may be many different ways in which we do that, and we should discuss those. And I think of that as something that happens in the unfolding of the master plan.
Okay, I just want to make that clear.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's clear.
That sounds fine to me.
Yes, Milton, did you want to say?
I, just to speak to the motion, I'm going to vote in favor of the motion. I do take a little bit stronger stand on the Figes Building probably than Danielle is outlining, and that'll be part of the discussion on the master plan when we have the hearing, and that sort of thing. But I guess, you know, I don't have a sense of what other members of the council think on the issue, but for what it's worth, my personal view is that historic buildings are extremely important and should be treated with the utmost care, because if you make a mistake and destroy one accidentally, it's gone forever for all future generations. And unfortunately, in the current expansion, which is a wonderful expansion, and has been handled wonderfully by, you know, the library foundation and Mr. Schlupf and the other people involved, the city did make a mistake, and we thought that we could move the Jake's House, which was an extremely old masonry structure, and in good faith went forward with that, and we turned out to be wrong. And as a consequence of that mistake, that historic building from a family that was very important in starting and founding the Urbana Free Library is gone forever. So I'm not intending to start a debate now, I just want to make, I guess, clear what my position is on it, which is that I did not think that the Figes House, moving it or, or otherwise changing it should be part of the master plan. I think it should be left as it is in the master plan. If future generations decide that it's important to move it for vistas for the library, or for whatever reason, future councils and future library boards and future foundation boards will have the authority to do that. But I will oppose this council entering into an agreement which would bind future councils and future generations to, to moving or, or otherwise disturbing the Figes House. And I, I think that is the importance of a planning document, is to try to plan for some of these important buildings and how to preserve them. You know, when Lincoln Square was built, it, one of the things that was planned for was how do you preserve the historic Lincoln Hotel, the Methodist Church that is there, and, and a very nice apartment building. And as a consequence, we still have those with us, and I'm confident that creative people, when it becomes time to expand the library again, will be able to figure out a way to do that expansion while also preserving the Figes House. If they can't, that council will have the operation of trying to move it or otherwise change it. But I don't think that this council should make that decision for them by entering into a binding agreement or, or master plan approving that. So that's my personal view. I'm not offering a motion or anything like that, but I do want to get that out there. And part, and so that people will know that'll be part of future discussions.
I think that's what the master plan calls for.
Okay, well, we can discuss it when we have the, the public hearing.
Ms. Pat?
Thank you. My concern about the master plan also is largely about the Figes property. About, I think it was just about 10 years ago, I brought a motion to the city council to ask, the council to ask the library to consider changing the expansion plan for the library in order to save the Jake's House or the Jacques's House, since it was built in 1854, and it was, we think, the library family house. It seemed to be worth preserving and saving if there were any way possible. And the, the library board did go back and look at that for a while, and they determined that, they came, and they came back to us with a plan for southward expansion of the library rather than westward expansion, and, and presumably it would have cost more, and folks didn't like the way it would look, and ultimately, we ended up losing the Jake's House. It was, I, I think that that experience is part of what causes some folks to be interested in getting the city council to sign off today on losing the Figes House, so that we don't get to the point of, of an expansion that, that needs that, that property being, being caught up in the controversy over it. And that, and that makes sense if, if your primary concern is avoiding the controversy. But I, I agree that there's absolutely no reason for us today in 2004, when we've just finished the current expansion, to make a commitment that in 25 years, we're going to lose that house. There's a lot, a lot can happen to you now and, and 25 years from now. It wasn't that long ago that some were arguing that the library didn't even need to expand as much as it is now. And certainly, it could expand all the way to seater without our having to lose the Figes House. So it's my personal opinion that that, that that decision about the Figes House is one best left for a later time when it's more relevant and, and, basically when it's necessary. It is not necessary for, in the foreseeable future, say, in the next 10, 15 years, for the library to control that property. But I, and I think there are members of the public who share that concern as well. I'm interested in hearing public input, and hearing more from the library board about that, but that, I think it's a legitimate concern and something that certainly is of interest to a lot more people than just those of us sitting around this table.
Any further comments? Okay, Mayor, you'll set up a meeting with the library board?
We'll set up a public hearing now.
Yes, there was a motion on the floor, and we always say the table, but on the table is where you said something to kill it, so it's on the floor, should be voted on, and Ms. Ms. Chenoweth, I don't believe Ms. Chenoweth actually amended her motion to include the rest of that language.
I did.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, but I can't remember who said it.
You just changed it. I was the seconded, so I agree to that. Okay, so we're voting, the motion we're voting on-
The motion we're voting on, as I understand it, is to have a public hearing after Labor Day that the, that would notice everyone within 250 feet, all property owners and residents within 250 feet of the library block, and that we would ask that the foundation bring back the language as written on the, the first page of what has been distributed to council members, minus the strikeout of the, the last whereas- to council members, minus the strikeout of the, the last whereas, um, to the, back to the Foundation for, uh, potential approval.
I can support that. Sorry, thank you.
Well, I guess we can just send a vote on that, and Mayor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Um, now, if I had one on the agenda, it's not adjournment. It's, uh, discussion of the at-large council representation. Yes, Ms. Chenoweth?
Could I make a suggestion, Chair, that given the lateness of the hour, that we consider number seven, eight, and nine, um, and 11, um, and can, and consider holding off on the rest of the, on rest of the agenda items?
You're saying therefore to not, uh, deal with the at-large council representation?
Actually, it would, basically to reorder the agenda items, seven, eight, nine, and 11 next, and then can see where we're at in terms of the other kind of more lengthy controversial issues.
Well, one, one option might be to just send seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and possibly 12, we do need to have, uh, 12 on. We just send those to council without any recommendation, and if you have any questions, you can, uh, you know, call myself or the staff, um, before they're on the agenda for next week.
I'd like to move that we send items number seven, eight, nine, 11, and 12 to council without recommendation.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes. So that brings us to the next question, the discussion of the at-large council representation. Mr. Otto proposed that we discuss this. Would you like to?
Sure.
In response to the people who showed up at last week's meeting wanting to discuss this, I ask that it be put on the agenda. Uh, I think there's been a fairly thorough airing of the issues already in the public discussion of it, so I don't want to belabor the issues. But, um, I do think that there's a significant part of Urbana that feels like its voice is not heard, um, in city council discussions, and, uh, I think an at-large, having two at-large representatives probably won't completely remedy that problem, but it is an important step, and, um, the at-large position should not speak exclusively for East Urbana or for West Urbana, but everyone, uh, student, people in, in West Urbana, people in South Urbana, in my ward, people in Mr. Hayes' ward, everyone would have a vote in electing these people, and they'd be accountable to all of the people. And, uh, so I would ask for your support. I think there's many very good arguments in favor of it, and, um, I don't find the arguments against them persuasive. I'm not gonna go into a detailed, point-by-point rebuttal of every argument that's been made. There's certainly been rebuttals offered for most of those. One argument I will try to deal with, and that is that this is aimed at diluting student representation. And, you know, there are students who live in Ward Seven, there are students who live in, in Joe's Ward and Laura's Ward, um, and many of them tend to be graduate students and vote more. But in the campus area that is west of, um, Lincoln, you have mostly dormitories with primarily undergraduate students, and, uh, it's a simple fact that many of them choose not to vote. If we are truly interested in making sure that those students are represented, then we would draw a ward, uh, that includes them, because there's certainly enough population there to constitute a ward, and that's typically what you do whenever you're concerned about representatives, uh, being represented and having a voice on city council, is you draw a ward that is made up of a majority of those representatives, a voting majority of those representatives. Instead, what the previous map did and what the current map continues to do is to divide up that population among several different wards, which is the classic example of what you do if you want to disempower a minority. You don't give them a voting majority. You go and add their populations to other wards so that they are diluted. So, with an at-large seat, I think the effect would not be to disempower those students. It would, as one gentleman pointed out, remove the whole question of how do you figure out which student, uh, you're supposed to be trying to persuade when you're on the quad, because you don't know which ward they're in. Every student lives in Urbana, and every student would have a vote for the at-large city council, so perhaps we could encourage more participation by those students. So, I would encourage you all to put this on the ballot and let the voters decide. People can have good faith disagreements about whether or not it's a good idea, but I think it's a serious question, and I think it's one that deserves to be put in front of the voters and to let the voters decide how they want their city council to be structured.
Mayor, I'm just wondering, what would be the protocol for this? Would it be to send it to council as a?
Uh, if, the motion would be to have staff draw up a motion with the wording of the referendum question to bring back to, uh, next week's council meeting for approval.
For, to just kick off the discussion, I'll go ahead and move that council, that staff draw up a proposed ordinance that would, or a resolution that would put this on the ballot and bring it back to city council next week for approval. So moved.
Second. Ms. Pat.
Before we make a major change to the structure of our government, we should give the matter careful consideration. Careful consideration might involve something like a piece of paper with words on it. I, I've heard that petitions are being circulated. I have not yet seen one, and when we make a motion to put, quote, "this" on the ballot, I don't even know what "this" is, because we have been presented with nothing. I, um, I guess some people don't mind just willy-willy making decisions like changing the form of government, but that's something I take seriously, and I think that that's, the only responsible thing to do is to take it seriously. It's my understanding that unless the proponents of, um, of at-large elections totally mess up, this question will be on the ballot on November 2nd without any action by the city council. There's a political mechanism for putting questions on the ballot, and for a question to go on the ballot for the voters in the city of Urbana, it requires 432 signatures. So, 432 registered voters will sign the petition. If they haven't already, this is going to be on the ballot November 2nd. Asking the city council to endorse this, whatever this is, um, is something that is not unreasonable, but it should be done in a responsible way that shows respect for Throwing it on the agenda a month before the legal deadline, having no study, having one night of discussion of whoever happened to have heard about it in the last seven days, is not a responsible way to treat this question, and it is not a way to show respect for government. Before I would vote to tell the people of Urbana that this is a serious, a legitimate matter worth considering, I, I have questions. I would like to know what the law, the details of the law regarding at-large representation and compliance with the Voting Rights Act of 1965. There have been lawsuits against many cities, and we should not be, we should expect a lawsuit against the city of Urbana if we were to go in the reverse direction of communities all over the, the country, like Springfield and Danville, and add at-large representation when these other communities have all been getting rid of it. I would also like to hear something other than a political discussion about this. There has not been one single person in this discussion who has explained, or even suggested or made an argument, not one person has made an argument as to how increasing the size of the city council will make government better, how we will serve the people of Urbana better, how government will be more efficient, and separate from the issue of whether you think it is or isn't, that has not been discussed. All we've heard is political discussion. And that's fine for politics, and I thought the reason, the real reason this was put on the agenda was so that, so that we'd have this, basically this public hearing, so that the proponents and opponents would have a chance to voice their views, and that was accomplished tonight. But it would not be responsible for us to, actually, right now, this isn't even a legal meeting, because we've hit the time limit. It would not be responsible for us to just say, "Oh, change government? Sure, toss it on the agenda for next week, and then we'll vote on it." If this had come up several months ago, we could have appointed a bipartisan commission to study the question and make a recommendation, and that's still possible if folks are interested in foregoing the opportunity to put this on the November ballot. But I think that what we decide here doesn't matter if the folks out there want it on the November ballot, they'll just do it. So, I don't, I don't see the, the appropriateness of a vote this evening, or, um, really, and certainly the necessity, there is no necessity for the city council to take action on this question. The people of Urbana have it well in their hands, and I expect that the voters will be voting on this question November 2nd. Thank you.
Are there any further comments? Mr. Hayes?
Yes, as far as, as far as our students are concerned in those dorms, whoever's running for election, if they want, if they want to get elected, then they're gonna find, find a way to get in the dorms, okay? So, hm?
Say it again, I couldn't hear you.
If someone wants to get elected, and they have several student dorms in their ward, right? And they're gonna find a way to get into the dorms and, uh, let the case be heard, because every vote counts, you know, whether, whether it's a lot of them vote or a few, every vote counts. So, you have to figure out a way to do it. My only comment is, good can come from change, but change for the sake of change is not always good. And a lot of times, we get all, you know, emotional about a lot of issues, and then when, uh, emotion is, is over, we're going back to buying and selling, building, business as usual. Now, what I'm saying is that, uh, if you remember the last presidential election, the fiasco that happened down there in Florida, and, uh, many people were saying that candidate Gore had the most popular votes, but he didn't have enough votes in the Electoral College. So, there was a big cry, "Let's do away with the Electoral College and, uh, elect a president by popular vote." And, uh, maybe that's, that's a, something that we want to think about. If, if you want these two candidates at large, put it on the ballot, elect them by popular vote. Now, what? Many of you didn't keep track of what was going on, but I think you had more people against the at-large representation. And so consequently, if you put it on the ballot, then you're really gonna find out how the people feel, and everyone would have the input on whether or not we should go with the at-large candidates.
Any further comments? Yes, Mayor?
I, you know, from hearing what, from what people said tonight about feeling disenfranchised, um, I think that they feel disenfranchised for a number of reasons, and a lot of people were talking about the ward map and the, um, there are some people that feel disenfranchised because, uh, they live in a, in a growth area, that even with the passage of the new map, those areas can be underrepresented in, um, as far as the distribution of population is concerned. They also feel disenfranchised because turnout in, uh, some areas is a lot lower than other areas, and those areas where turnout is low are generally the campus areas, and the turn, where the turnout is high is generally the single-family residential areas of the city of Urbana. And so, that's the reason why people feel disenfranchised with the, um, current structure of the city council. Some people feel disenfranchised because they didn't have a contest in their ward. There was only one candidate, and that's happened repeatedly over the last, uh, number of years, where there are no contests in the wards, because there's only one candidate. And that, quite frankly, has happened in the school board elections since they've gone to the sub-districts, where there are a number of uncontested races, so people don't have a chance to participate in the democratic process through the ward or sub-district system. And another reason they feel disenfranchised is because they're unhappy with their council member. Perhaps they campaigned on the side of the council member that lost, and so they don't feel that they have a direct voice on the city council, because they don't have, uh, they don't feel that they can reasonably approach their council member for one reason or another. So, these are a lot of reasons why people feel disenfranchised, and quite frankly, they don't need to look in Webster's to find out what disenfranchised means. It means left out. They feel left out of the system, and that's why they want a change. And I think it's a reasonable change to add a couple of at-large council members, because it will balance the inequities of a map that is out of balance with regard to population. There's no question that the current map, the map that was passed, will be out of balance by any common sense standard as far as population. The growth in Ward Six will be so great that it will probably be close to 20% greater than the average of the other wards, and that's, uh, that doesn't meet the accepted court standards, which are generally about 10%. At-large members, at-large council members will allow each resident to have a role in electing three council members rather than one. So, you would, if somebody wants to come and lobby the council, uh, they have three members that they can talk to that say, "You have to be accountable to me, because I'm one of your constituents, I get to vote for you." I think that is a, a big plus. As, as an example of that, I was talking to some people in Champaign, um, the members that were against the tasers in Champaign, and a number of them thought that J.W. Pertle was not, um, necessarily an effective representative for them, and they felt good that they could go to other at-large members on that issue and say, "We are part of your constituency, you need to listen to us." As I say, it, it does allow residents to participate in the democratic process. There have been a number of times when those wards don't generate a contest. At-large certainly would generate, uh, a contest that everybody in the city could be a part of, uh, and the at-large, adding a couple of at-large seats to the city council retains the advantages of the ward system while balancing and tempering it with an at-large structure as well. So, this is not a monumental change. This is not a, a complete change of the, the form of government. This is adding two seats to a council that is already seven. If there are nine members, two members constitute 22% of that body. If there are nine members, two members constitute 22% of that body. So 77% of the body would be, remain the same and you'd add two members, 22% of the new body. So this is not a monumental change. It's an evolutionary change. And with the advantages of the at-large, the biggest advantage I see is giving people the hope of empowerment. There are people that feel left out and this would be a way that they can feel included in city government. And that's what I've been hearing from people is people feel excluded, they feel left out, and this would be, be a way to include them. And so I think that this is very much a common sense issue. I support it wholeheartedly. And if the council chooses not to put it on the November ballot, that I hope the petition drive is successful and gets it on the November election and will encourage people to support it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a comment if I may. You know I support this and I have from back in the last election. So there's no surprise, but I didn't, I asked the council to put it on the ballot and the council decided not to. You weren't here, Danielle, but that was the case. And so I didn't really push this, but I did support it and I do. The, it's an interesting mix of both Democrat and Republican that's pushing this thing. It's not, it's not a political thing. It is not meant to favor Republicans. Although in tonight's paper, there's a letter to the editor saying it's to favor the GOP. That's not true. If you look at every citywide elected official, we have Phyllis, the mayor, we have Phyllis Elliott or Carol Elliott and the, John Chester, all Democrats. And I would support that. I mean, I don't care if they're Democrat or Republican, frankly, as long as the, there is more of a voice for the people. And you know, the discussion of the voting numbers by comparison is not really substantial enough to be a part of this argument because the, anybody can vote for these at-large members. Any ward, any person, there's no, there's no benefit to one and not to the other. And then when I hear about, you know, rich people contributing, and I think specifically it was one mentioned that Buzz Johnson was going to run and Tim was going to support him with lots of money. That's not true. Buzz is not going to run. And I would say that, you know, I must tell you how much, you don't know how much I compliment this council in conversations with other people. And I tell them, "I don't like thinking bad things and I don't like being acrimonious towards my colleagues here. It disturbs me, it upsets me, you know, when you hate or when you're angry and the poison gets at you." And I'm sure you know that. So I mean, I compliment this council and tell people. They say, "Well, you're the only one." And I say, "No, that's not true." I say, "The, the council at large do good things. There's a lot of generosity. There's a lot of help for the poor. There's a lot of help for education, for the library. There are a lot of good things being done by this council." And so I think the politics is not as glaring as one might think. Although I've heard tonight some undercurrents of animosity that are, it's unfortunate. And on the, on the, on the whole, otherwise, though, I've heard some very thoughtful comments made. I would like to see this go to the council for the council's consideration. Take the two weeks to, or take the week rather, to think about it. And if you don't at that time decide to put it on the, on the ballot, fine. You can do it, but at least you have a week to consider it. And it's, it is a short time, very short. The concept of liberality, liberal, I pride myself on being liberal. When I graduated from college, I was very proud to be coming from a liberal university. And liberal means to me open-minded, willing to consider thoughts freely. And I think that's a noble thing. That's what our, our first, our founding fathers were. Conservative means however, to, once you're in that mode of, as you develop and as you grow, you find values you want to conserve and preserve. And so that's a good thing too. You can be both. Why this group is called progressive rather than regressive, I don't know. I don't know what the difference is. I don't think the map that we have accepted is terribly progressive. I think it's more regressive in that it, it accepts that which has been done in the past more so. My ward is not at all. If you're looking for representation, and this council shows many times in many ways that it is concerned about representation of minorities and of different points of view. My ward is not at all that way. It is all largely Republicans shoved into one area so that you guarantee one Republican council member. And as handsome as that council member may be, it's, it is not fair to the people. And that's why I think in this case, two more representatives would help those people. The, I don't want to go on and on here. You folks have, are pretty well decided in what you're going to do. But I must tell you, my, my ward, if you look at it, and it was, it was designed originally by Charlie Smythe and Cliff Singer of what the Berenger Commons, Myra Ridge, Stone Gate or Stone Creek, and then parts of Milton's 7th Ward. Took out the Democrats, I mean, the Section 8 housing at Sunny Crest, which I didn't ask to be removed. I would welcome that, to meet those people. And then gave the 7th Ward some, an area that's considered Republican. This, that's politics. That was political. This thing is not as political. This, this petition asks the people, would they like to, and it gives them a chance to consider it, be liberal, be open-minded, to consider freely a new idea. And it is not unconstitutional and has not been challenged as such. The distribution of the population is a problem and we should see that and recognize that. I don't know how I could get to your hearts to suggest, you know, I'd like to suggest that you redesign the map and look at it more thoroughly and give everybody a, a chance to contribute to it. Because you're not going to hurt the council by, even if you added one more Republican. They're, the council does a good job and it doesn't have to worry about that. But what we have now is any growth that goes eastward is going to make those six wards lopsided in a very short time and is in the process of doing that right now. So if you're concerned about representation, then you should, I would think, welcome this idea or redesign the map. I don't hear anybody wanting to do that. Let me finish, I'll finish briefly. We have, we're coming up to 11:30. I imagine that's what your comment is. I'm sorry to go on, Esther, but it's very important to me, this, and I think so to Milton and a number of people too who came to this. But anyway, so they all stopped there. And I ask for you to send this to the council for, to put it up or vote it down. And, yes, Danielle?
It's difficult for me to even address the issues of this on the table. Many people have spoken to them. There's so many issues, there's so many questions. Well, if you'd like to stop, it seems like everyone else has had lengthy conversations past 11 o'clock, but if you would like to halt the conversation, then do so.
No, no, I'm just saying if you want to.
Okay, I'm not making, I'm not making a motion to extend. So participating in discussion. The, I have absolutely no idea where the number two came from. It just, there was a rabbit and it was pulled out of the hat and all of a sudden it was, "We want two at-large districts," or "at-large seats." I have a lot of questions to, "Why two? Is there some reason why two? Why not 14? Why not double up the wards? Why not go all at-large?" I don't feel like there's been any kind of discussion on that issue. Instead, it's kind of like, you know, you know, God gave the Ten Commandments to Moses and then, you know, we got two at-large districts the next day or in two weeks as the case may be. Why, why wasn't this in our packet? Why isn't it online? Why isn't the person who does radio broadcasts about what is before city council every week? Why was she not able to receive any information about this? Why is it that our packet all of a sudden really became the editorial column of the News Gazette? And there was no information that was given to us about this? No reason for why two? No reason for why at-large? No reason for why now? The timing of this is, is really suspect. And people brought this up and people seemed concerned. I think for, in many ways, I feel like a lot of the people who do have very legitimate issues about whether or not they're being adequately represented or being led by the nose on, you know, at this kind of precarious time where it's very difficult to, tension runs high. I know that, all I know is that we talked about a ward map for eight months. We passed a ward map. It was vetoed. We overturned the veto on, there were, there were several threats towards me in private that if I didn't change my vote on the ward map, then this would happen and this would be said about me. And so these kind of, it got very personal. There were personal threats. And then the next thing I know, the day I walked out of the meeting with the mayor where he told me, you know, "If you don't do this, X is going to happen," then all of a sudden, number two has come out of the, out of the heavens and we're supposed to add two at-large districts. And we're supposed to believe that this is not a political, that this is not a reactionary situation, that does not come from the ward map issue? I think that people do have legitimate concerns. This should be a long process. I agree with Esther, this is a very disrespectful way of, of going about this. It seems to be rushed. It seems to be under the table. There's nothing on the, on the internet about it. I think that it is a distraction that we need to get on with the business of government and that the, if, if folks would like to make this a serious issue and concern that there are avenues for doing so and that we should see that. We have not seen that so far. We've seen sloppiness and an attempt to push something through in two weeks that really should take a year to discuss and deliberate upon. And I will absolutely not support something like this at this point. But I certainly would support further conversation and I really do want to reach out to those who have spoken, made some, interesting arguments about at-large and also doubling up seats. And I would like to have further conversation with us and I can imagine this going in some useful direction in the future. But at this point, I see it as political and reactionary and I will not support it.
Esther?
I think the purpose of this item on tonight's agenda has been accomplished. Advocates of creating at-large voting have had an opportunity to use the city council meeting and chambers to promote their point of view. Now the political process can, can have its run and I would like to see us devote our next week's meeting and future meetings to government business, starting with the business that we never got to tonight because we're dealing with politics. Therefore, I move to table.
Well...
Sorry, this is a not debatable motion. Please call the vote and it's, and we're a half hour after.
Is that valid? I mean, do we do that in committee? I'm not sure about that.
Table, it's generally table to a specific time. You know, just to table indefinitely is, you know, putting it off into never, never land. Is it a motion to table until the next meeting?
No, it's a motion to table. And at some point in the future, if someone wants to move to take it off the table and gets a second and gets a majority vote, they can. But, but a motion to table means the discussion is done.
I, I guess I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on this motion.
Was the motion even seconded?
Yes.
Was it seconded?
Yes.
But the motion to table, yes. The motion by Ms. Pat, seconded by Ms. Huth. I'm not the chair, but we're not, yes. Call the vote, please.
Shannon Worth?
She's good.
Yes, to table.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth? Mr. Otto?
No.
Yes.
Mr. Whelan?
No.
No. Well, then it passes then. I'm going to slide right here, four to two.
Mr. Chairman, since our meeting weekly ended a half hour ago, are we adjourned?
Oh, I thought, wasn't it 11:30 that we, our meeting?
I move to extend the meeting for another 30 minutes. We haven't dealt with these remaining agenda items.
Send some of them on to committee without recommendation, or to the council without recommendation. So 7, 8, 9, 11, and 12 will be on next week's agenda.
I believe there's a motion without a second. Joe, Mr. Whelan? There's a motion and it does not have a second. I believe that it dies at that point.
Yes, it does. Yes.
Chair, could we adjourn the meeting?
Yes, let's turn with just a second, just a second. Let me ask a question. Is, can we send the Sunny Crest final road business to the council as well as the others?
Pardon me?
Can we send this discussion, number 10, of Sunny Crest Economic Development to the council meeting?
Be a problem as far as I'm concerned. It could, well, it's not an action item.
No, it's just a...
Why don't you just put it under staff report?
Under staff report, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
In front of the meeting.
Very well, we are adjourned. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.